We'll call the regular meeting of the Paramount City Council together. The order, wow, am I overbearing here with this? Tonight, the pledge will be led by kindergarten students from Gaines Elementary School, invocation by Pastor Deborah Jamison from the Life Gate Foursquare Church. All please rise.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's an honor to be with you all tonight and thank you for leading us in the pledge as kindergarteners. Lord, we thank you as we're wrapping up another school year in our city and we're honoring the students tonight, Lord, that as we also come to do business, that you are here in our midst. You have a stake in this city and we submit ourselves to you and we ask for your guidance, your direction, and your leadership. In all that is said and done tonight, we give you praise in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you all. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian.
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here. We do have some presentations tonight, but first we have a video, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, we are going to start off the evening by showing you video. Last year, the city formed a partnership with Grid Alternatives and they are a nonprofit organization that actually provides free home solar service to underserved communities. It's paid for by cap and trade funds from Sacramento as a means for reducing greenhouse gases. The service can help homeowners save up to 90% on their electric bill and is free for owner-occupied homes that meet the income requirements. You know, we first learned about Grid back in 2017 when they tried to market their program to Paramount residents with little success. Then in January of 2018, Councilmember Lemmons, who was mayor at the time, and our Assistant City Manager Kevin Chun, they attended a symposium entitled Organizing Disadvantaged Communities for Success at Cal State Dominguez Hills. Mayor Lemmons, again at the time, ran into the Grid Alternative folks and learned about their lack of success with their initial campaign to install free solar panels at Paramount Homes. So from that point on, we were determined to forge a partnership with this nonprofit group to help them market their program to our residents. So after working through some hurdles, including liability issues, we actually launched a marketing campaign with Grid that included a story on our environmental website, a booth at our first eco-friendly fair, social media posts, and distribution of flyers at all of our facilities. So lending the city's name to the program really helped to break down the skepticism barrier that most people have when they hear about a free program. You know, it's too good to be true type of thing. So the successful partnership that we have had has allowed Grid to install a number of projects here in town. It's also a great resource for our residents. So now getting to the video. Last month, the PBS documentary series entitled Earth Focus, they aired an episode focused on the grid program. To explain the process, it featured the Uriarty family of Paramount. The Uriartys were a bit skeptical at first themselves. We happen to be familiar with the Uriartys since they actually purchased their house through a program that encourages homeownership in town, and that's one of our programs. So the show we're about to show you, it's a wonderful depiction of the family, the city, and Grid, and we'd like you to see it now. So it's about 12 minutes long, so we'll go ahead and air the show. So with that, I'll turn it over to Danny to run the show.
Southern California continues to be a pioneer in solar technology.
I got nothing. Pollution causes harm to all of us. It's not just an abstract thing. And communities of color, low-income communities, even women versus men disproportionately have to carry the effects of that pollution. Paramount is a community that has a lot going for it, a strong cultural life, but Paramount is also a city where a significant chunk of the land is owned for industry. So Paramount is a community where environmental justice is a key priority. It's important that we bring things to people here. As we transition away from fossil fuels, as we move away from coal and just say goodbye to that whole era, we move into an area where we're dependent on renewables. The question is like, who is going to get the training to go into these industries?
Me making my decision to change my whole life around was the last time when I was slanging and they raided my house and they took my kids. Me sitting there thinking like, man, I'm already 30 something years old. I got nothing to show for it. Nobody's here. Where are all my friends at? No family, nobody, nothing. It's when it hit me. It's just like, man, I gotta change everything of me and everything around me. I started educating myself and I was just like, nah, man, I gotta step up and man up and just be responsible.
So this is the treatment that you really want for me?
Okay.
Oh, is it?
Oh, it's very.
Good job. It looks like it's having a good effect.
Why I want my tattoo removed is because it's a bad example when I'm out there with my kids, out there like I can't go to the beach and then looking at my tattoos because I don't want it to follow suit. I want to be a better role model for them. I came out with no probation, no parole, nothing, so I didn't even have no helping hand in everything. The first day I got out, I end up staying at Union Station downtown LA. And then from there, I look at myself, I was like, man, I really hit rock bottom, but I was really tempted to start slanging and making quick money how I used to say I had all the connections and everything. I went to Homeboys and I remember there was a solar program they had right there. You know why I go, solar is going to be a career for me, so I'm gonna just stick with the solar. So I end up doing the solar and Grid Alternatives came over there and they gave us training. So right here, we're getting all this hands-on training that will give me the skills to go look for a job anywhere else in the industry.
What Grid Alternatives does is install panels for communities in areas that are environmentally disadvantaged, helping low-income people get access to cleaner energy and lead better lives where they have access to more economic resources. California is actually at the forefront of solar just because the state has created so many incentives to expand. So that means there are about 90,000 people who are working in the industry right now and that number is growing year over year over year. With all these new jobs opening up, we want to see the population of solar installers, solar project management professionals, reflects the demographics of the same people organizations like Grid are installing for.
As a family, we like to have little adventures. Take the kids out, show them as much of the world as they want to see.
We try to teach them to appreciate the environment and to appreciate the good things in life and that would ensure that they have this as they're growing up and that they can have the same for their kids. I learned about the solar system, it was referred to me by one of my brothers. He got the email from the city and he forwarded me the email and told me, hey, they're offering free solar panels, check it out. And I told my husband to do his research on it too and it seemed like it was something that would work for us.
I want to make sure that you're completely comfortable with the program. So are there any other concerns that you might have or questions that you have that you want me to address?
So once the panels are up, does that mean that they're ours?
The panels will be yours on your roof as long as you live there and you will enjoy all the savings. Remember, we talked about between 50 to 80% savings on your energy bill.
When she said she was gonna get solar panels for her house, I was very skeptical about it. At first, I thought it was too good to be true. I thought it was not possible. I thought there was gonna be something else to it rather than just, you know, getting the solar panels for free.
One of the scariest things, it's nobody wants to get themselves into a long-term contract if they don't know what they're gonna get, if they don't know that the outcome is gonna be good.
He was very skeptical. He said, no, it's gonna be some sort of catch where, you know, they tell you, they're gonna charge you the panels later on when you already signed the contract. He was not as easygoing as I was.
So when I come across someone like Ed who is not completely believing, you know, the program and all the benefits, I convince them by pointing out that we are a nonprofit organization. We're the only organization that was selected by the state to do this. And so that says a lot. We're not out to make a profit here. We're here to connect people to clean energy.
So the company, Grid Alternatives, pays for the system. They haven't installed, they haven't monitored for 20 years. And at the end of that 20 years, I have the option of having them removed at no cost or own them and I take care of them at that point.
Once we figure it out, we can actually go for it at no cost, like at least try. We went for it and we're about to get it installed now.
I've told family and friends and they still tell me, are you sure? What did you just get yourself into? Did you just sign your house away? Did you sign your life away? What happened?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I think a big challenge for us is that because we're intentional about working with communities that don't necessarily see solar every day, there can be a natural state of distrust when we come in and say, here's a free opportunity. I think a lot of our customers are skeptical that something like this isn't too good to be true and I don't blame them because I think there's a lot of rationales for being skeptical.
I think most people are skeptical because they can't afford to make a mistake. Yeah, they're great for our environment, yes, you save energy, but at the same time, the cost of installation and the cost in the long run, I think that makes people afraid.
Many of the populations that we work with are in communities where there were significant presences of predatory lenders, for example, 10 years ago. And a lot of different institutions or different companies have left people feeling like they were taken advantage of. We're actively involved every day in showing people that their neighbor has gone solar with us or someone else in their community, or they can just come and watch us do it somewhere else and that this is real.
That I was talking about solar panels and I know what, and I know what they do now.
Really? What do they do?
Get clean energy?
Yes, they do. They make clean energy from the sun, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
What I love about my job is everything about here. The people, the atmosphere, it's like we're a family here. And right here, we take time and we get to know our homeowners, our coworkers, and I just love coming to work every day. All right, guys. Well, I'm Emerson, I'm your guy supervisor for the day and Sal as well. So we're gonna go over to the safety meeting, we're gonna brush up on it pretty quick, you know? So just to remember, when we're on the roof, remember, if you guys drop something, always call headache, you know, headache. So, you know, that's one of the main things. Yeah, I was incarcerated just like Emerson and this program helped me out to stay out of trouble because it's hard for us to find a job in any industry out there.
The model of Grid is unique because every project where we're installing solar is what we call a classroom on the roof. People come out with us because we know they know that we're the only organization that provides free training to get jobs in this solar industry.
Really excited to see the process getting going, seeing all the equipment arrive, all the workers here. It's really exciting to see the process really moving along.
I'm believing in more because I'm seeing that it's getting done, so I see that it's actually happening. So my perspective is changing a little bit to being more believable.
This is my first career ever and me having my career is like, wow, times like am I still dreaming or still like, I could live off my career now. It feels great. I used to be part of the problem, but now I've fixed the problem. So this is the way I pay it forward now. So we are done. We're installing your installation and everything, so now we're gonna turn on your system. You want to turn it on, Eduardo? Go ahead. Emily? Your system's working. Congratulations, guys.
Being one of the first homes in the city of Paramount to go solar is very exciting. It's not common around here. It's something that when people see that they might want to take that next step to possibly do it in their home. And we won't just be one house, we might be a whole block or a whole city, hopefully.
We can teach our kids from a young age, you know, we gotta take care of where we live, we gotta take care of this planet. It's important for you guys growing up and for you to pass it on as well.
It all has to start somewhere and even though it's one house, one city, one county, it could be the start of a big chain reaction.
Okay. We do have some presentations, if the rest of the council would like to join me. Okay. I hope everyone enjoyed the show. Did we? Yep, we did. We're very happy to be involved with the work that Grid Alternatives is doing. It is indeed a great resource for our residents. We are glad that it turned out so well for the Uriarty family. They're here tonight someplace and I'd like to invite them up to receive a certificate and our thanks for being such fine representatives for Paramount. I'd also like to invite Stella of the Grid to join us also, wherever we are. You guys like saying anything?
Aside from thank you to...
I'm here too.
Go ahead. Just a thank you to the city of Paramount, to Grid Alternatives, for everything they've given us. I mean, there's no words to say except for just thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good for you. Can we take one more picture with Stella in it as well?
Yes.
Hold on, back.
To reiterate what the Uriarty shared and what Mayor just shared, we were here about a year ago. Councilmember Guian had invited us to do a quick presentation and then all this stuff started happening thanks to then-Mayor Lemon, let's see, Kevin Chun, the Assistant City Manager, John King, John Carver from Planning. And so it was really a city effort that made this happen. We have completed about eight installs just over the past year and a half, but we have 25 current leads, families that are interested in the program. And I know that the video really helped just generate more and more leads, so we're really hopeful that we can just light up the city of Paramount because we know that families really need this program. Again, we have somebody that just went through this, they trusted in us, so thank you to the Uriarty family because it's, you know, we have four or five different solar companies out there, but they're for profit, we're nonprofit, we're hired by the state of California. And so that's been really tough. So with the Uriarty's help and with the city council members and Mayor, we have been much more successful this year and we want to just light up the city and we want to triple the number of families that have solar. So thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Exactly. We're jumping around here a little bit now, we gotta jump to number four. Would Adrian Landa please come forward now at this point? We're just changing it around a little bit because we have some people that have to leave and go somewhere else, right? Now let's meet some other accomplished young folks from the high school. Adrian, well, you're gonna stay here already. Please come up when I call your name. Maximilian Chow, MacGyver Chow, Grisella Rios, Karina, yeah, Karana, Zebayos, Eileen Tanamato, and Juliet Bell. You have, he's got more things too. You wanna do that now? No, let me finish this. Mrs. Tanamato and Mrs. Bell are advisors for the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Club. These students are our club members. They have all been obtaining great success in regional, state, and national competitions. For instance, Maximilian has qualified for Nationals over three years. Grisella has qualified for two years in a row, both of them won gold medals last year. This year, three of our students placed first and one placed second in statewide competition. Seniors Maximilian and Grisell and sophomore MacGyver came in first in the entrepreneurship category. Senior Kiana competed in the tourism and hospitality and came in second. As a special note, Mrs. Tanamato was honored for being club advisor for 40 years at Paramount High School. I think she deserves a hand on that alone. She is the longest-working FCC LA advisor in California. Her first gold medal winner was Martha Ramirez in 1984, who is now a teacher at Wertz Elementary. Eileen has had students placing at the state and/or Nationals every year since. All four of our students tonight have qualified for the Nationals. Every time Paramount's FCC LA has gone to the Nationals, they have come home with either gold or silver medals. Yeah, let's give them a hand on that too. That's great. This year takes place in Anaheim. All 50 states and Puerto Rico will be there with thousands of participants. Students from all over the country trade pins from their local areas at the competition. So tonight, we're not only wishing them well, we're also giving them 300 city pins for trading. I guess we have those someplace. Good luck and thank you for representing our city so well. We certainly appreciate it. Okay. Now you can do your stuff. Oh, we got it all right. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. They didn't tell me that, I'm sorry. Would you like to say anything, being around for so long? Would you like to say something after being around so long? Okay. Make sure you go back to the... Okay, you're already here. Our, yeah, this is getting confusing, no. Our Assemblyman recently held the first Assembly District 43 Art Competition for high school students. This is part of the community outreach effort for the AB 530 Lower LA River Revitalization Plan. The theme for the competition was Water Connections. All of the entered artworks are on display at the Southgate Art Gallery until June 18th. Paramount High has a lot of great student artists and we applaud all of them for this achievement. Did we skip a page? I think I did. Yes, I did, I'm sorry. These things stick together, I apologize. They will then be displayed at the Second Annual SELA Arts Festival alongside the LA River in July. And finally, the winners will be showcased in Sacramento at the state Capitol. Tonight, we are very pleased to announce that three of the four winners are from Paramount High School. If you're able to make it, please come up and join us. In second place... In second place was Griselle Rivera. Yes? Third place, third place is Brian Huzar. Brian here. And the speaker's choice was Tatiana Nunez. Okay. Down here? You always need to remember? Because I always like to say this, once a pirate, always a pirate, okay? Okay, would Jeanette Larson please join us up here? The Traditional Artists Guild has been a longtime fixture in our community. It was started, in fact, in 1968 by Nona Taylor. It's been a gathering place for local artists to share and discuss their work. It's also provided great service to our young people in town with their annual student competition. TAG received huge numbers of entries each year and offered a wonderful, inspiring showcase for the many winners. As you may know, John Nolan ran the show for a long time with great help from Jeanette. As you also may know, John passed away earlier this year. Due to a number of factors, including John's death, TAG is now disbanding. The organization and Student Art Show will be greatly missed. Tonight, we want to offer memento from the city and a word of thanks. And by the way, we are using a new, more artistic design for our city plaque. And this is the first time we are giving it out, which is fitting, since it's going to the artist group. And, oh, wow. I haven't seen one of these, that's pretty cool. Look at there. There you go. Let's see, "In appreciation presented to Traditional Artists Guild, Paramount City Council offers its thanks and admiration for the many years of service to our community." Well, don't wanna drop an olive. Got it? Haven't seen that. Thank you again. And now, before we finish with tonight's presentations, I want to invite the youngsters who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance to come up and take a photo. They are kindergarten students from Gaines Elementary in our star after-school program. They did a fantastic job with the pledge, and we want to thank them very much. Okay, City Council, public comment updates?
No updates from the last meeting, sir.
Okay, public comments?
Yes, sir, we have quite a few tonight. Our first speaker's card is from Mr. Jose De Leon, and he wants to discuss air. Mr. De Leon?
Hello, good evening to all of you, City Council members, public. I'm here just to talk about some numbers on the last month, readings on the monitors, just for the records, because I know nothing is gonna happen, but at least I want people to know that this thing keeps going on and on. For example, monitor number two, which is two blocks away from Lincoln School, on April 3rd shows 2.29. On April 9th, it shows 1.06. On April 15th, 1.01. Monitor number eight, which is next to Aerocraft, on May 15th, it was 1.30. May 18th, 1.97. May 21st, 1.31. May 24th, 2.49. May 27th, .77. May 30th, .92. And as we can see, the problem is still going on and on. It's been going on. I know you did a nice video trying to persuade the public, but we didn't accomplish anything. Yes, the smell is better by where I live, but we still have, remember also that the chromium 6 doesn't smell, it's supposed to be. At least the smell went away. And by the smell, we were able to find out that we were having higher levels of chromium. I'm here just to remind you, and like I said, to keep in records, because I know in the past, speaking with different residents who lived here for 30 years, they would say that they were complaining to the city, but nobody did anything, and there was no proof. That's the argument that you give to the public. But at least now that there is record. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to address that at all?
Sure. Sure, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did speak with AQMD about the recent spikes. As you recall, Councilmember Guian mentioned the monitors in front of Aerocraft having this spike. So I heard from all five of you loud and clear that we need to keep tabs on the monitor in front of Aerocraft. In addition, at the meeting last month, Councilmember Lemons asked about the rolling averages and if the combined spikes would have exceeded the limit that AQMD had set had the abatement order been in effect, which obviously it's not in effect anymore. But the answer is yes. So the three-day averages, March 1st through 7th, was 1.37. Three-day average, March 27th through May 3rd, was 1.46. And then the three-day average for May 6th through the 15th was 1.43. Now, in regards to communication with AQMD, I spoke to AQMD management. I mentioned to them our disappointment in the lack of communication with, when the spikes occurred, we were to be notified. They apologized, and they vowed to improve communications. In fact, they have done so. Ever since we called them to complain, we've been receiving comprehensive emails from them reporting to us the status of that particular monitor. Additionally, I've assigned a staff member to look at this on a daily basis and report back to management if there are any spikes. So we'll continue to pay close attention to that. Lastly, Aerocraft, they did call us last week, and they requested to meet with us. So we met with them this morning. They had a meeting with AQMD on Friday to discuss the spikes. So because there was no change in production at the plant, the conclusion from the meeting with AQMD and Aerocraft was that the spikes were caused by the construction of the new dust collectors and the total enclosures that they're doing to the buildings. They tell us there was concrete cutting occurring at the location, and there was also movement of some of the emissions equipment, the older equipment that they had, that likely caused the spikes. We called AQMD to verify that this morning, and in fact, AQMD did agree with that. Additionally, with the new equipment, AQMD recommended some housekeeping tasks that Aerocraft has already implemented. In any case, construction on the building should be finished by the end of the month, and the buildings will be totally enclosed with ulpa, U-L-P-A, alpa filters. So, and that concludes.
Okay, fine, thank you. Any further public comments too?
Yes, sir.
Can I elaborate on that for one second? I just want to make sure that we're not passing the buck here to the AQMD, because if you remember correctly, in 2016, in December, the Paramount City Council, it said, you know, air quality wasn't our issue. And boy, have we changed since then. We do realize it is our issue, and it is our concern. But when we spent 50,000, over $50,000 on a PR firm, we have an air committee, we have a PR guy who speaks Spanish, we spend tens of thousands of dollars on monitors with AQMD, we send out mailers, we make videos, we fire environmental company, and when we're that invested now to not have anybody monitoring these numbers for three months once that abatement order was lifted, it's substandard. And I just want to reiterate once again, we have to do better and stop passing the buck. This is our responsibility to make sure that these spikes stop occurring.
Okay, our next speaker card is from Ms. Andrea Crowe at the Paramount Library. Andrea?
Good evening, Mayor Hanson, councilmembers, and the City of Paramount. The month of June is filled with entertaining and educational programs at Paramount Library. Tomorrow, Tuesday, June 5th at 4:00 p.m., MCMO will teach teens ages 12 to 8 about robotics and programming using LEGO EV3 Mindstorms. On Saturday, June 8th at 12:00 p.m., adults are invited to Vietnamese home cooking. Learn to cook shrimp pops on sugarcane sticks and lettuce wraps with fresh rice noodles and tofu. There will be samples. And on Saturday, June 15th at 2:00 p.m., our Summer Discovery Program kicks off with the magic of Africa Wacko. After the show, sign up to participate in the Summer Discovery Program game and earn prizes for reading. This year, children, teens, and adults are invited to read for prizes. Check out all of our Summer Discovery Program events at LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker's card is from Mr. Gerald Serta. Mr. Serta?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Today, I just want to report on a couple of things. I called Calmet on a dumpster that was lit, it was put on fire. This was about three weeks ago. The dumpster looks horrible, because now it's rusty, there's no lid. I spoke to a Francisco, which was pretty cocky, and said, "If I'm not the account owner or the account holder, I can't make that switch," or that, request that switch that changed. And I asked him, "Well, why not? You know, I'm a neighbor, it looks horrible." And he wanted my address. I gave him my number, he wanted my address for what? I don't know. So if this employee from Calmet is cocky to somebody that's calling for something as simple as switching out a dumpster, just to, that is an eyesore to the city, you know? And it's been three weeks, so the pickup driver has left it alone for three weeks, and it's still there. I called yesterday, it's still there. So I called the City Hall to talk to the city manager, the Assistant City Manager. I did get a response from the department that handles the rubbish, which is Calmet. But I tell myself, it's like, well, this guy is being cocky over the phone, it's like, that means he's been doing it for some time, and I'm not somebody that's just gonna walk away from it. So if he's been doing it for some time, other people have probably called for the same reason. Now, Calmet charges extra for big bulky item pickups. They charge extra. And I remember some months ago, over here, that the city approved Calmet to submit the paperwork when account holders go delinquent. So now the city's responsibility is to send it to the tax assessors. So now, the tax assessor puts a lien on the residents because they're delinquent on a trash bill. Now, that tells me, it's like, how much authority does Calmet have in the City of Paramount? They do have a facility, they do bring other garbage from other cities, transporting them through the city. So why are they treating residents horribly over the phone just to swap out a dumpster? That's my question, and I would like to get an answer on that. Now, since I got a little bit of time, I want to go over this air. These companies are not gonna clean up this air. And nothing's gonna get done unless there's a big lawsuit or they shut down. This is gonna be a cat and mouse game. It's been that way for, ever since it started, and it's gonna continue being that way. Now, I called, I mentioned to the district about the issue with the kids. They replied saying, "That's outside the fence, it's outside our perimeter." That means it's putting the fault at the city, the district, the school district. So that's something that needs to be addressed as well. Because what is the city doing if it's been happening for two, three, four, five years? You know, when is it gonna end? Thank you.
Can you look into that on this dumpster?
No world. Wow.
Yes, we will be calling Calmet about the bin, and we, as Mr. Serta said, he did call in, and we did respond back to him, so... But we will definitely address the behavior of the employee on the phone from Calmet, for sure.
Okay.
Our next speaker's card, Mr. Mayor, is from Ms. Eleanor Mendoza, who wants to discuss about the Heinz DS Parade.
Okay.
Ms. Mendoza?
Hello, my name is Eleanor Mendoza, born and raised in Paramount. My dad went to that school. I'm just calling, well, I'm here regarding the parade. It's gonna be their 96th year celebrating their Portuguese Fiesta in the City of Paramount. That same Fiesta goes down the whole Golden State, down the whole state of California. There's Portuguese communities, exactly the jewel that we have there. I lived in San Luis Obispo, they had it there, in Pismo, in Cayucas, that was all by where I live. But that they're going to have their Fiesta again, and it's gonna go down Colorado, through the factories. And even if they're doing that, fine and well, but that the City of Paramount should take the time to clean or make sure it looks half-presentable for them to have a parade down Colorado. That's all, 96 years in the City of Paramount, since 1923.
They've been here a long time, yes?
Yeah, yeah. I went to Lisboa, Portugal, felt very at home. Went to Mozambique, Semol Semol, the Portuguese are there. When I lived on the Central Coast, a strong Portuguese community. So just FYI, that's all, that we owe them that. 96 years in the City of Paramount, it's our jewel.
Hey, thank you. You can take a look into that also, okay? Thank you.
Yes, our next card, Mr. Mayor, is from Luis Baptista, and he'd like to give the council an update on the Paramount Youth Soccer Organization. Mr. Baptista?
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I just actually wanted to bring some good news. First and foremost, I want to congratulate the city and all the citizens for the Paramount Heritage Parade. I personally enjoyed the day, and I saw a lot of smiling faces, and that's what it's all about. It's about creating maybe something negative into something positive and continue to unite our city and our community. I would like to take this moment to actually continue to bring some good news. A few weeks ago, we received a much, a letter that we were waiting for from the Cal South Youth Soccer Organization. Cal South is a soccer, the state soccer organization, recognized by US Soccer and the International Football Association, which is FIFA. and the International Football Association, which is FIFA. So now, the news that I wanted to bring is we are recognized by the state, we are recognized by the entire country, by US Soccer, and also by the International Football Association. And we had never done that without your support and the community's support today. I didn't bring our big soccer community. I just wanted to come after work, give you guys an update, give you guys a good news. Thank you for your support, and we hope that you continue that support. We already see changes in our community and our students and their education. Three of our players got picked up, signed contracts with the LA Galaxy. Academy players. So they actually, they entered this one-year program where they actually study at Cal State Dominguez Hills. They go through the academy system Monday, seven days a week, basically, with their games on the weekends and tournaments. Our teams in Paramount continue to showcase, are being showcased throughout the state, throughout the, and even within the country. We've actually taken teams to Minnesota, to San Diego, up and down the coast. So the Paramount community name keeps on ringing pretty much everywhere in the state. I'm getting phone calls from associations and soccer communities from far, far away, and I wanted to bring those good news. We could not have done this. This is a true grassroots initiative. And as you guys remember, when I came in, I was fired up. Today, I come to thank you and to continue with this, continue to ask for that support. Being said that, we do go on a national level and state level. I would like to also ask, we depleted some of our finances due to a new platform that we're gonna start using. So that's where all the money is going, to new platforms, to better our volunteers. We are volunteer-based, a full nonprofit organization. And for those clubs and those teams that are going outside and representing our city, we would like to ask if you guys can help us out also with some pins for our players that are being, basically are being, exposing our city throughout. I know this is something small, but thank you for your time, and I will come back some other day and give you a full update. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. And we can look into that for some extra pins, too, can we?
Sure, we can provide some extra pins.
We do that, do we have?
Yeah, for PSO. I'm looking at Dave Johnson, so Dave, Mr. Johnson will be handling that.
We were at the kickoff for that, too, so that was quite fun, actually. There was a lot of kids there, as I recall, but I think it was a softball kickoff, baseball. Was it baseball or softball? Either one that was going on that same day, too, but we got them all.
Got them all in. Our last speaker card, Mr. Mayor, is from Rodolfo Cortez, who wants to discuss solar panels from Grid Alternative.
Good evening, council members, mayor. So that video was inspiring, I want to say that. So thank you so much for, you know, this partnership that you're having and that you're bringing to the city of Paramount. I was especially inspired by what the representative from Grid Alternative said, that, you know, you're gonna be tripling, or trying to triple, the number of houses that have those panels. So that's great, because of course, as everyone can tell, we are, as a community, as a species, we're entering a big problem. You know, we seem to have affected the climate in ways that are not good for us, are not good for us. So that's why I hope that when the spirit of continuing their efforts with Grid Alternatives, that the council considers further actions, I just wanted to mention a few. So for example, you know, people may see this, you know, on social media. Other countries, other states are actually coming up with technology where you can drive a car and there's panels on the road. And those are creating electricity. That's something we could have, maybe, you know, creating good-paying jobs in Paramount. You know, maybe we need those machines to suck out all that air, all the carbon dioxide, out of the atmosphere. You know, those are things that could be good for the community, clearly. However, there's a problem, and I hope that the council members address it. The problem has to do with the fact that even though the council is trying to, you know, improve the situation here locally, we have a bunch of elected officials that are not listening to our needs and that are not delivering what is needed for these other technologies to happen. So we have, as an example, today, I think we're highly likely to see, you know, a new state senator representing Paramount and all of the southeast LA cities. But it's public fact that that person is taking a lot of money from corporations that are polluting and that do not want these technologies to come over because they're invested in the gas, the gas that keeps getting more and more expensive for us. So that's not good. It's not good to, you know, be accepting, you know, as a politician, money from Chevron, Shell. That's not good. We need actual representation out there. So I hope that the council, please, you know, in your interactions with these other elected officials, and maybe you could even write a letter or a petition, or really initiate, you know, an effort here, because we need these technologies, just like Grid Alternatives, and we need a lot more to clean up the environment so we can have a healthier city, community. So please, do not stop there, keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more, sir?
No further ones, okay. The consent calendar.
Please, we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Lemmons to approve the consent calendar. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number nine is Public Hearing Resolution Number 19.020, confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for annual assessment levy. We have staff report, please.
Yes, sir. The council heard this item in May and set a public hearing for tonight. It involves setting the annual assessment of a levy for the landscape and lighting district at the industrial park in the northwest end of town. And Adriana Figueroa, our public works director, will handle this item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as John indicated, on May 7th, the city council adopted Resolution Number 19015, approving the engineer's report and Resolution Number 19016, declaring the city's council's intention to levy and collect assessments for landscape maintenance assessment district number 81-1, which, as John indicated, is located in the Orange Avenue Industrial Park. The assessment in fiscal year 1819 was $14,200, and the assessment for the upcoming year, fiscal year 20, if approved tonight, will be the same. This assessment will be spread among the 29 industrial parcels. At this time, it is recommended that the city council read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 19020.
Okay, but this is a public hearing, so we gotta open the public hearing first? Is anyone wishing to speak in favor? Opposed?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Lemmons to close the public hearing. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Motion to be in order.
I'll make, approve the item.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Lemmons to approve the item. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. New business, item number 10. We have an oral report update on strategies against gang environments, the gang environments program.
Our report? Yes, sir. Every year, our deputy district attorney, she provides for the city council an overview of some of the activity that she's been involved with. This past year has been a very productive year for Deputy DA Kelly Tatman. So with that, I'll call her up. Ms. Tatman will come up and show you what she's been up to. Kelly?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So today, or this evening, is about the year in review for the Strategies Against Gang Environments Program. As you all know, the city of Paramount and the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office have been in a contract with each other for a deputy district attorney to provide services here in the city of Paramount. I was thinking about it before I came here today. I've been here this last May for eight years. So it seems like a lot shorter than that. But anyways, we're here to talk about the year in review. What have I done and what has the city seen and experienced over the last year? There are a few main categories of activities that I have focused on. The informal diversion program, abatements, the text-a-tip program, stay-away orders, and what I call the intangibles, things I can't really put a label on, but things that come up almost every single day that I help out with. And new laws and challenges that law enforcement has seen over the last year and will continue to see over the next few years. My job is in conjunction with many other agencies. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department being the main one, the probation department, my colleagues and partners at the DA's office, city of Paramount employees, our homeless liaison, code enforcement employees, people in community development, and other departments as well. Without their cooperation and them working with me, the things that I want to get done would not get done. Let's start with the informal diversion program. The informal diversion program, a brief review, is a contract between myself, the district attorney's office, and the probation department to handle all juvenile traffic citations here in the city. Citations that normally would not go to the Los Pedrinos Juvenile Hall. So we're dealing with citations for truancy, possession of drug paraphernalia. Now we're dealing with marijuana possession citations. Some possession of knife citations that Los Pedrinos would not accept. What else would you say? Offhand. Said truancy. So citations, citations that don't amount to misdemeanors, but I do deal with some misdemeanor citations that Los Pedrinos would not file. So what happens? What happens is when a juvenile is cited out, his or her citation comes to me, and I will send out a letter to the parents saying that their child can participate in this program instead of the citation being forwarded on to the probation department. What's the advantage? Is that the child can come, register with the city, and be referred out to one of two programs of their choosing. They complete the program successfully, they come back to me, show me successful completion, and their citation is dismissed, like it never happened. If they don't do it, it goes on to probation and stays on their record until they're 18. We've had a participation rate in this program, on average, of 38%. That may seem low, it's actually pretty high. The participation rate of 38% does not take into consideration citations that end up getting called back by the issuing deputy, letters that were sent to addresses on citation that never reached the parents, they were sent back to me, or citations that ended up being combined along with probation cases that a juvenile already had. So in fact, if we take those factors out, the participation rate is actually higher than 38%. I also focused on abatement activity. When I first came into the city eight years ago, this is primarily where my focus was. Abatements are very successful. Typically, we've been handling abatements pretty informally through a phone call to a property owner. I've highlighted a couple of abatement locations that have taken some time over the last year. One on Petrel involved a gangster who was causing numerous issues in the neighborhood. He was eventually arrested for being a felon in possession of a firearm. Initially, I tackled this abatement by getting a stay-away order from the apartment he was living at. Don't worry, everybody, he wasn't on the lease. He was just holding up there with his girlfriend and her parents. Eventually, I contacted the management company, and they were evicted from the location for allowing someone who wasn't on the lease to live there. There was another property on Lakewood Boulevard. I know council is probably familiar with this location. A few years back, there was a horrible incident that happened there. New tenants recently came in. They began having after-hours parties, serving alcohol, having live music. And this is another example of how this is my job as a multi-agency effort. The party car from the sheriff's department actually discovered the violations, brought it to my attention. We ended up meeting with the business owner, who is now working with community development and code enforcement and obtaining the proper permits to conduct whatever business they want to conduct there within the legal guidelines. I know the city council and other city officials are familiar with the city hall parking lot situation we had with a local transient. I'll touch on this a little bit later, but the case of Martin versus City of Boise has really had quite an impact, everybody knows, on the homeless issue here, not only in the city of Paramount, but in the county of Los Angeles, the state of California, and eight other western states, thanks to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal that ruled to criminalize homelessness is a violation of the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution, cruel and unusual punishment. I'll go into that a little bit later, but we didn't tackle that issue with that individual by violating any of that individual's rights. We obtained a stay-away order from the city hall parking lot through legal means because of other activities he was conducting other than camping out and holding up around city hall. Another abatement was for Adams Avenue. There was an illegal gambling establishment, Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. Major Crimes Unit came in and helped our SAO team out with that. And eventually, that business was shut down, and those tenants have vacated. There's also another ongoing issue on Texaco across from Salud Park. Those individuals, or one particular individual, we've obtained a stay-away order on. He's not allowed to go into the park, and we are in the process of working with that property owner to make sure that the tenants, other tenants, the law-abiding tenants in that apartment building are no longer terrorized by this particular unit. All right, so I mentioned the Martin versus City of Boise case. Here in Paramount, we're lucky because a lot of other cities are having a hard time dealing with their homeless issue. I think you all know the homeless count came out today. We are able to tackle our issue in various ways. We have a homeless liaison who is working closely with all the organizations in the county that provide resources and services. But as far as it relates to my job, there are various other avenues that I've been using to make sure that the good citizens of this city and the business owners are not being affected as much as we see in other cities. Right now, for this particular case and how it handcuffs law enforcement, how it handcuffs city officials, it appears as if the case is going to be taken up by the Supreme Court of the United States. So it may be reversed, it may not be reversed, we'll see. But there are other avenues in which we're tackling our homeless issue here that are beneficial to both the homeless and to the city and its residents. All right, text-a-tip. I know you're familiar with text-a-tip. For those who are not, there is a number set up where anybody in the city, but our focus primarily was with the high school students, anybody can text information regarding anything that's going on on campus to a telephone number. Where a text is received by our public safety director, Adriana Lopez, our two SROs, the high school principal and our security supervisor for the district. They receive the text. Our point person in responding to all texts is one of the SROs. A text will come in, it will be determined whether or not a text is criminal in nature, a school issue. And then, the school resource officer then directs the proper people to deal with the text. What kind of texts are we receiving? Earlier this year, January, or let's go back to last year, the beginning of the school year, October 2018 through December 2018, there were 18 tips. I think I mentioned this before when I was here. The Orange County Sheriff's Department originally started this program. They used to get only seven tips a year. We get 18 on average within a three-month period. And these are great tips. This is what it was designed for. We get tips of possible illegal vending, bullying. We get tips of possible illegal vending, bullying, harassment by one student to another, possession of alcohol on campus, fights that are occurring, fights that are going to occur, tips of students possessing weapons on campus. We've had stalking complaints, reports of other students being under the influence, drug sales on campus, smoking on campus. I've been sitting on SARB sometimes in the school attendance resource, school attendance board, and basically, sometimes when text-a-tip is brought up, a lot of the kids like to call it, "Oh, the narc-text." Line. And you know what? That's not such a bad thing, because that's what it's for. Students to have an outlet to complain about things they wouldn't otherwise feel comfortable saying. It's not anonymous, it's confidential. We have their phone number, and I think that's pretty clear to all the students, that when they send in a text, we won't use their name, but in case we need more information and several other circumstances we've had, we have, we contact them back as privately as we can to get more information. Other tips, from January through March, there were 20 tips, and you can see from those tips up there, a lot of the same things. A new one we got was animal abuse, where some students were harming a bird during lunchtime, which was dealt with pretty quickly. Let's see. Another area that I focused on was case tracking. This is really important, because I know you know most of our cases, adult cases, go to Compton Courthouse. Paramount is a very small city compared to a lot of other cities that feed into the Compton Court, and our voice needs to be heard there, because a lot of those cases, we here in Paramount find those very important. But to people in Compton who are dealing with assault with a deadly weapons and very violent cases on almost a daily basis, sometimes our, I don't want to say little cases, because they're not, but sometimes our voice isn't heard quite as loudly, and that's what I'm here for. I'm here to go to court and make sure that the DA's who are in court and making offers and plea bargains and doing trials and making decisions on our cases, we have a voice, and they get the full background of someone who may be before the court on a simple battery case, but they've got a whole criminal history of assaults and robberies, and they need the whole picture, so they can really understand what sort of sentence and sentencing guidelines a certain person needs. Let's see what else. So the year ahead, I'm going back a little bit. There's a new office in the criminal justice system, the Office of Mental Health Division. This is stemmed from Penal Code Section 1810, which was an assembly bill that was passed, which gave mental health diversion to defendants who could prove that they had an underlying mental condition which caused them to commit the crime for which they are charged. I think last year, I initially mentioned that anyone charged with any crime could go into mental health diversion. They have amended that, thankfully. I don't think fully expanded it as wide as it should, but now, anyone who's convicted of murder, rape, or child molestation is not eligible for that program. But you should know, those who are eligible, as long as they go through the mental health diversion program, their case gets dismissed following completion of the program. We're going to have issues with bail reform. Thank goodness, it's on hold until the election in 2020, where the voters of the state of California get to decide if we're going to a no-bail system, meaning people who are arrested for nonviolent offenses won't be held in custody anymore. And that includes people who have violent criminal histories. We don't have to worry about this right now, but I think as voters, we need to become more fully informed on what may or may not be happening. So the year ahead, what are we going to do? What am I going to do? I'm going to continue to assist our detectives and our deputies in increasing their filings and making sure in our filings that anyone who's arrested, where the evidence is supported by it, they receive the most serious charge in filings. I'll continue to appear in court for public safety sentencing terms that benefit the City of Paramount's residents and businesses, and continue to educate members of the public that the future of public safety is in their hands. Do you have any questions?
Okay, questions? None? Thank you very much. I appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 11, we have another report, voter survey results.
Yes, sir. We have another guest speaker tonight. At the mid-budget, the city council approved an expenditure for consulting services to initiate a poll of Paramount voters to gauge the possibility of a revenue-enhancing measure. In this case, it would be a sales tax measure for a future ballot initiative. Over the past year, I've mentioned that expenditures have been outpacing our revenues, and as you will see in a presentation later this evening during the fiscal year 2020 budget introduction, this is certainly the case. Considering a revenue enhancement measure such as a sales tax.
That's a new one.
Yeah. Such as a sales tax initiative would create, would certainly establish a strong source of much-needed revenue. But before this can even be considered, it's very customary to get a pulse of the voters, just to see what the sentiment is for a measure like this. So we employ the services of a reputable polling firm by the name of FM3. FM3 conducted a similar poll for us back in 2015 when we placed Measure P on the ballot. So with that, I'll introduce Mr. Adam Sonnenschein from the firm FM3 to share with us the results of the poll. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and Mr. Mayor, and council members for having me. Adam Sonnenschein, FM3 Research. I'm going to take you through some of the kind of key findings, a few of the selected highlights of the survey that we did on behalf of the city, and feel free to ask questions along the way. Just to give you a bit of background about our firm, as the city manager mentioned, we've been around for a long time. The firm was founded in 1981. We are located just up the road in Los Angeles. We do about 300 surveys and over 160 focus groups each year, and we have experience working for public agencies on more than 500 tax and bond ballot measures campaign, ballot measure campaigns across the country, dozens of cities in California, including Paramount, and then many of the nearby cities in the area, Bellflower, Carson Commerce, et cetera. Again, just to give you a bit of a sense of who we are. And here you'll see some of the methodology of the survey that we conducted, so you have a little bit of background on how we approached this. We did this survey both online and by phone. Those phones included landlines and cellphones. In early May, between May 2nd and the 12th, included 392 interviews with Paramount residents who have a voting history that implies they'd be likely to vote in an upcoming election. We've got a margin of error of basically plus or minus 5%. We had interviews conducted in English and Spanish, and sometimes things don't quite add up to 100%, because we've rounded decimal points to make things easier to read. Okay. We're going to start with just some general context, some community attitudes of the voters who took the survey, so you have a feeling of kind of the background that leads to the consideration of the kind of measure that the city manager discussed. First question is a broad question that we ask in nearly every community, which is generally speaking, do you think things are headed in the right direction, or are they off on the wrong track in the City of Paramount? And you see that more than three-quarters of residents believe things in Paramount are generally headed in the right direction, 77% in blue. 9% said things are headed in the wrong track. That's the red slice of the pie there. And 14% who were unsure, I will say, as you saw, we've done surveys for a lot of different communities, this is one of the stronger right-direction, wrong-track numbers that we've seen in the last couple of years. In terms of the performance of the city government, it's something that we find is an important factor in terms of willingness to support this kind of a measure for a local funding source. We found generally positive ratings for the performance of city government, about more than 6 and 10 describe it as either excellent or good. Another 28% call it fair, which we generally take to mean average. Only 7% say the city government is doing a poor job, and 5% were unable to rate the We have a couple of statements here, and you'll see the next slide follows the same format. We provided the statement on the left side there, and then asked people to tell us if that statement was accurate or inaccurate. And the first one that I want you to look at there in the middle, it says, "The City of Paramount provides a better quality of life than other neighboring cities." Looks like we might have had a bit of an issue in transitioning our PowerPoint to your PowerPoint, but essentially what you see is that about 66% of the voters in the survey found that statement to be accurate. 25% said very accurate, 41% said somewhat accurate. If my math is right, it's about 19% who said somewhat inaccurate, and 6% who said very inaccurate, with 9% who were unsure. That's what that DKNA means. And then looking at the bottom, about half who say the City of Paramount's finances are generally well-managed, 51%. 14% who said that statement was inaccurate. And not surprisingly, because most people aren't following the day-to-day, you know, dollars and cents of their city's budget, 35% were unsure if that statement was accurate or not. We had two statements that related to safety and crime in the city, and we found on the first one that more than 6 and 10, close to 7 and 10, said that the City of Paramount has become safer in recent years. 69% said that was an accurate statement, compared to 22% who said it was inaccurate. And then at the bottom, similarly, crime has declined over the last few years in Paramount. Slightly different twist on a similar question, 61% saying that's an accurate statement, including 24% very accurate, and 24% who say that's inaccurate. So more than two to one who say it's accurate that crime has declined over the last few years in Paramount. We asked an open-ended question, which is actually something that we don't often do in these kinds of surveys. I don't think we did in the last survey for the city, but we wanted to give as many different possibilities for perspectives of your voters as possible, and we asked them a question, not thinking about a ballot measure, but just in general, in a few of your own words, "What issue do you think should be the biggest priority for the Paramount City Government to address?" We allowed people to give us multiple responses, and we grouped them. So in the first one, you see at the top, top priority, pretty far and away, was either maintaining or improving public safety. In that, as I mentioned, we've grouped responses. Some people said specifically break-ins, some people said specifically gangs, some people said generally safety, some people said we need more police officers, more sheriff's deputies. Whatever it may be, we grouped that into that category of maintaining and improving public safety, followed next by homelessness, maintenance of streets, homelessness, and then below that, maintenance of streets, infrastructure, and parks, which, again, we've grouped. Below that, city spending and transparency, people want to make sure they know how the city does its business, business and employment, air pollution, traffic, traffic safety, and public transportation. All three of those had about 6% of the respondents saying that should be the top priority. As you continue on, some of the other items, like youth after-school programs, which we separated from generally improvements to the schools. I know you don't run the schools, but not everybody follows that level of detail, so they want to make sure that schools are improved, et cetera. And then we had a number of items that were sort of one-off, didn't fit into any of the categories. We lumped that into other, and then a 10% who didn't know, or didn't have a specific answer. Okay? So that's some background. Want to take you to the general opinions on a local sales tax ballot measure, which, as the city manager mentioned, that's the kind of measure that we tested in this survey. And we started with a conceptual question, which, as you'll see in a moment, correlates pretty closely with support for this kind of measure, and that's, "Does the City of Paramount have a need for additional funding? Would you consider that need great?" Say they have some need, a little need, no real need, or you don't know. We bracket together the great need and some need. We set that off against the little need or no real need. We see that nearly three-quarters of voters perceive at least some need for additional funding for city services, just 15% who say little or no real need, which is about a fifth of the group that said great or some need. And then 13% again, who said they don't know one way or the other. For the purposes of the survey, and just for the survey, we put together a 75-word ballot title and summary, the kinds of things that voters could encounter when they go to actually cast a ballot, because we find that's the best and truest way to identify the viability of this kind of measure. This is how we do it in basically all the surveys that we do for local agencies. So the language that you see here is the hypothetical language that was tested in the survey. Obviously, you as the council have the ultimate discretion about what actually goes on the ballot, if anything. Okay? But just so you see, the title was "The Paramount Essential Services/Public Safety Measure." We mentioned a number of different services that could be funded, but referencing clearly other general services, this was a general-purpose measure, so you would be setting the priorities for how this funding would be used. It's a three-quarter cent sales tax, which provides approximately $4 million, would be in effect until voters choose to end it, and then some accountability that I think you know, but is automatically included, but is a helpful thing to remind folks who may not be aware that that's a standard rule of this kind of local measure. So on the initial reaction to this ballot question that you just saw, we found that more than three-quarters of the respondents supported the measure. Now, this kind of measure that you just saw has a 50% plus-one threshold in order to be approved, so this is well above that 50% threshold, including the survey's margin of error. We asked people to break down if they said yes, is that definitely yes or probably yes? If you're no, definitely no or probably no, so we get a little bit of a sense of the intensity of their support. And also, if someone started by saying they were undecided, we asked them if they leaned towards voting yes or they leaned towards voting no, just to give us a better indication of where people truly stand. So if you see, we've boxed the definitely and probably. Those are maybe somewhat more committed voters who were more willing to identify themselves as supporters of this measure for the purposes of the survey. The 6% undecided lean yes are people that, you know, were not as strong in their support from the beginning. Okay? I wanted to show a couple of different breakdowns of who supported, and actually, there weren't very many people that opposed, as you saw, we were at nearly 80%. But because this is a sales tax, and we know that in that kind of situation, there's always a lot of concern, and I know there is in your city as well, about the impacts across income groups. We found that in your survey, the strongest support for this kind of measure was actually from the voters whose annual household income was either less than $50,000 a year or between $50,000 and $75,000 a year, which makes up more than half of the voters in the sample. And I think we've generally found that to be the case on sales tax measures, as I think folks in those groups tend to recognize the need for additional services that they could benefit from. I mentioned earlier the rating of the city's job performance. Find those that perceive the city as doing an excellent job, support the measure at 9 and 10, 90% to 6, with 4% undecided. That's the left-hand column there. Then the folks who rated the city's performance as good, that was 77 to 18. Even those folks who said the city's performance was only fair or even poor are still supportive of this kind of measure at 70% or nearly 70%. And then lastly, in this category, you saw the question earlier about the need for funding, and this is what I was mentioning about the correlation between one's sense of a need for funding and willingness to support a measure. On the left, you see people who said the city has a great need or some need for additional funding. Fully 8 and 10 of those voters support the measure. This is again on that initial response. And then even those folks who said the city does not have much of a need for funding, they're in a kind of a little or no real need, or they don't know, they're still supportive of a measure. Okay? We took out a couple of the things that you saw in that 75-word ballot question and tested them at an individual level, so that you could see how voters prioritize some things. We also added a couple of other items for the purpose of doing a little bit more exploration, and asked people to rate them their highest priorities on a scale from extremely important to not too important. So the dark blue here means, is the percentage that said that individual item was extremely important, then you get to very important, the pinkish color is somewhat important, and then the darker red is not too important, and we've lumped in the don't knows, because both of those numbers were so small. And the highest priority that came back when we asked it this way was somewhat similar to how it came out in the open-ended question, which is maintaining levels of public safety. We basically had nearly 100% of people who said it was either extremely or very important for the measure to address that priority. Below that was... Below that was one that didn't rise as much in the open ends, although it did come up somewhat, which was protecting local clean drinking water supplies, and then 911 response, keeping public areas safe and clean. You see a number of things related to safety in your community. I'm not going to read all of them. I know there's a lot to go through here, streets and potholes, youth after-school programs, et cetera. Continuing for the next slide here, this is the same question, some additional things that we wanted to just flag for you, addressing homelessness, which you saw was one of the larger priorities of your voters in an open-ended way. Gang prevention, these are some of the things that they were telling us were amongst the top priorities for how to use the funding. And then the last one I just wanted to highlight at the top of the page here was maintaining essential city services. It's clear that voters are pretty satisfied with the general level of services in the community and want those maintained as a higher priority than, say, improving some of the existing services. Not to say there's no appetite for improvement, but people don't want to see cuts and don't want to see things scaled back. As you note, over the course of an election, people will be providing information, both pro and con, about any kind of a ballot measure, right? So we wanted to test that and see what happens, so that we can't predict, we don't have a crystal ball, but we can try to project what happens somewhat and give you a sense of, okay, if there's information put out there by supporters, there's information put out there by opponents, where does that leave this measure? Because we know not everybody knows everything about all of these issues upfront, right? So I'm going to show you quickly here. This is a line chart that takes you through the initial vote. That was what we saw earlier, where I broke down the definitely and the probably and the undecided. That was 77 to 18. We provided information, some reasons why people would say this is an important thing to do in Paramount, and how it would benefit the community. The support went up to 84 to 11, which is about as high as a ballot measure I think could possibly go. After some opposition, some reasons why people might oppose this, like there's too many taxes and et cetera, it fell basically back to where it started, 78 to 14. But still, you see the dotted line there for 50%, which is the threshold that this kind of measure would need to pass, and it's well above that line. For some context, for your 2015 measure, we did a survey for the city in 2014, August 2014, and this is the same chart there from the survey on the left-hand side. And then you see the dashed lines, that takes you to the actual election result. So you can see the survey basically had it where we were after some information was provided about why the measure was important. My understanding, although it was several years ago, is that there wasn't a real substantial opposition campaign that was ever developed against that measure. So it seems like that sort of vote after information, after people talked about why it was important, was probably the most analogous to the actual election process that happened, and the results were basically at that number, 75 to 25. So some conclusions. We found that a 3/4 cent sales tax measure is viable for further planning for the March 2020 ballot, has widespread support. I do want to emphasize the further planning part. This is not always an easy process. There's a lot of discussions that need to happen, a lot of community listening that's valuable, and the survey is one part of the process, not the final product, and there's lots of discussions to be had. We found a strong sense that the city needs additional funding, and that along with positive impressions of the city government, kind of the underpinnings of this level of support for a local revenue measure. Voters feel the city's gotten safer. Still, though, a strong priority for providing and maintaining public safety services, and a number of other priorities that voters want to see funds dedicated to, drinking water supplies protection, streets and potholes, services for youth, particularly where it relates to keeping those youth safe, addressing homelessness, keeping the city clean. And one thing to consider, you know, you don't necessarily need to take this next step right now, but what is often done is having a strategic communications firm that kind of helps put together, translate from city speak to regular person speak, so that voters in the community have the best sense of what your plans are and what you're trying to do. So that's our presentation, and I'm happy to take questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Lot of information.
No questions? Pretty impressive. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12, funding agreement for Huntsaker Avenue improvements between the city of Paramount and the city of Compton. Staff report?
Yes, sir. Over the past several years, it's been very common practice for us to enter into cost-sharing agreements with one of our neighboring cities for a public works project. We've done this in the past with the cities of Bellflower, Southgate, and more recently, the city of Downey. We now have an opportunity to do a similar agreement with the city of Compton for Huntsaker Avenue in front of Dominguez High School. So here's our public works director, Adriana Figueroa, to handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. As indicated, the neighborhood street resurfacing project, or project number 9931, includes slurry seal and restriping for Huntsaker Avenue between Alondra Boulevard and Mers Street. The boundary between the city of Paramount and the city of Compton runs down the middle of the street. The city of Compton has agreed to pay their half of the construction costs for the proposed improvements, which comes out to $46,000, and they have approved and signed the funding agreement, which is included in your report. With that, it is recommended that the city council approve the funding agreement for Huntsaker Avenue improvements between the city of Paramount and the city of Compton, and authorize the mayor or his designate to execute the agreement. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Been moved by, you know, I'm losing my whole train of thought. Been moved and seconded that we approve this item. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item 13, agreements for as-needed architectural services. Our staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. This next item is something that's required by HUD to keep us eligible for use of CDBG and home funds for the variety of our normal programs that we run through Community Development Department. We're required to go out to bid for architectural services on an as-needed basis, and we have two firms that we've successfully worked with over the years. So with that, I'll turn it over to our finance director, Karina Lamb, who will tell us about these two firms. Grant?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as John mentioned, the city has used CDBG and home funds to implement commercial and residential programs throughout the city. In previous years, we have contracted two firms, MDG and Studio 111, to assist us in the development of plans and concept designs for facade or property improvements. While we are very pleased with these two firms' services, HUD requires us to go out to bid every five years. As part of the process, we published a notice on a local newspaper, which is press telegram on April 2nd. Three firms were solicited to submit a proposal. By the deadline, two firms submitted a complete statement of qualifications. That includes MDG and Studio 111. Both firms have had extensive experience working with the city. We're very pleased with their services. Therefore, tonight is recommended that the city council approve and authorize the city manager or his designate to enter into agreement with MDG and Studio 111 for as-needed architectural services, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Katrina, are these all grant funds and not out of the general fund?
Yes, these are all funded by CDBG and home funds.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Further questions?
Move the item.
Second.
Been moved by Lemon, second by Hoffmeyer to grant these agreements. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 14, resolution number 19.018. This is applications for Proposition 68 per capita grant funds. Who has a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. In June of last year, California voters approved Proposition 8, oh, 68, excuse me. Prop 68 provides funding for local governments for park projects. There are two categories of programs. The first is competitive, and the second is a per capita program. Per capita is given automatically to cities based on their population. But before we're able to access these funds, the city council must approve a resolution to provide for these funds. So with that, I'll turn it over to our community services and recreation director, Dave Johnson, who will handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John. Mayor and council members, as John pointed out, this is a chance for some one-time funds from the state to do some park development projects. So just to take you back, though, in April of 2019, the council did approve a resolution to allow us to apply for the competitive grant program, so we're in the process of working on that. What this resolution for you tonight allows us to apply for the per capita funds from the Prop 68 program. We do not yet know what the amount is. The state is calculating that for us. We do know that it will be a minimum of $200,000. So when that money is put in place, we'll enter an agreement with the state. There will be a required 20% match on any projects that we will submit to them. How this process will work, they'll tell us the amount of money as we submit projects and we draw down those funds. They'll obviously subtract those funds, and once those funds are gone, that's it. So we have before you tonight, resolution number 19.018, and we are requesting approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Move the item.
Approve.
Moved by Martinez, second by Gil. To read by title only, adopt resolution number 19.018. We have a cap and roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item 15, a oral report by a city prosecutor presentation.
Yes, sir. Last month, you recall, our public safety director gave us an overview of our code enforcement division. Our city prosecutor here, Mr. John Kavanaugh, has become an integral part of the code enforcement operation. He handles mostly the most difficult cases for us and provides guidance to our code enforcement team as well. Tonight, he's going to give you a review of some of the cases that he's been working on. So with that, I'll turn it over to our city prosecutor, Mr. Kavanaugh. John?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm very honored to present to you a presentation of our office as a city prosecutor. We did this a few years ago, and we usually try to do it every couple of years, but we wanted to make sure we had more data this time to give to you and show you exactly how we are integrated with the code enforcement department, as well as all the departments within the city, to try to achieve what we think is an important aspect in what your policies are in code enforcement. So with that, I'll give this brief presentation in the sense that what we do. Our goals and objectives of our office are basically in three major items. Number one, we want to continue to implement the city council's longstanding policy of voluntary compliance for municipal code violations. You have stated that and directed us over the years that you want voluntary compliance. We're not to be heavy-handed, we're not to go and look for problems, but we want to try to get voluntary compliance when there's issues. And we try to achieve that, and that's one of the policies that you have given us and code enforcement, and we try to do that. The second thing is, we assist the public safety department and code enforcement officers to work with residential property owners, tenants, and business owners to achieve voluntary compliance in order to correct code violations. This is a really integral part of what we do along with code enforcement, because we feel that's a lot better to get voluntary compliance when you're working with these people than attacking them or going after them right away, and we found that it's much more successful in getting voluntary compliance. The last item is, this is our kind of last resort, where we utilize all available legal remedies only when voluntary compliance cannot be achieved, and only in conformance with due process under the law. This is an important aspect, especially in light of legislation that continues to come down to state, that requires local agencies, public agencies, to exercise due process before having any impact on private property of private owners and property owners. So we want to adhere to that, and that's kind of a last resort we do. So how are these goals and objectives achieved? What we have done over the years is that we come up with what I call the toolbox, and it's basically a set of available tools that we all use to achieve voluntary compliance. The nice thing about this toolbox, like any other toolbox, is that one tool is not always good for every situation, and sometimes when you have a number of tools, you can achieve the same result in different situations. So we'll go through seven of those. One of them is a community outreach. The second is an open-door policy with our office, officer discretion and training, the voluntary compliance program, coordination with all pertinent city departments, administrative citations, court-ordered inspection warrants, as well as recordation of substandard conditions, and finally, court-ordered abatement. As you see in our toolbox, the more severe remedy is more at the end. And so, you know, it all depends on the circumstances. Sometimes we may go get voluntary compliance right at number one, sometimes number three or four, and in rare circumstances, we have to resort to number six or seven. So it's a toolbox that we use to achieve the objectives that you want in your policy. As you can see, these are the generated cases that have come along since 2011. If you recall, public safety director Adriana Lopez indicated that when she came on board, the number of cases started to go down after 2017 and 18 and 19, as we can see that. Part of that is due to her policy, where she has given our office more code enforcement cases that maybe have stalled or maybe have not gone to a conclusion, and now we assist the officers. And so Adriana Lopez has said, "Let's get the city prosecutor involved," and as a result of that, we've lowered those cases and got resolutions. So that's been a big factor and very, very effective. What we have is, the code enforcement cases that are presented to us, we call those cases being put on the matrix. And this is not the matrix where we have, we talk about the blue pill, the red pill, that Morpheus said, the Neo. This is just basically a spreadsheet that we have created that represents those cases in which code enforcement officers have exhausted all their available remedies to try to get voluntary compliance, and for one reason or the other, they haven't been achieved. So they bring it up to our office, and we put it on what is known as the matrix. How many cases were given to us since we've been on board? There have been over 302 cases that we put on the matrix. How many cases that we have closed to date? 267 with an 88% closure rate. How many cases have been closed due to compliance agreements? And we'll go into that later, of compliance agreements, 112. And as far as recouping costs for abatements or code enforcement costs from our office, we've approximately brought in $117,641 was recovered by the city, and there is now currently an additional $19,000 that is pending that we hope to receive. There are cases currently scheduled for voluntary compliance meetings, there are six of those, and then we have about 41 cases of residential rehab programs that may be qualified for those programs, and we've referred over 41 of those over to community development. One of the things in our toolbox I want to talk about is community outreach. Community outreach is really, really an effective way to get voluntary compliance, because it enables code enforcement officers, officers to assist community residents with suggesting proactive city programs. Some of them are the Clutter Free Program, the Pitchin' Paramount, and the Residential Rehabilitation Program. We have found that this type of community outreach by the officers to potential code violation properties, many, many of them get cleared up by just those individuals coming into these programs, and that's been very effective. So that is kind of the first stage, and a lot of times, we get that voluntary compliance. The next thing is what we call the open-door policy and officer training. This is kind of a new avenue that we've had, and this is primarily a joint venture that our office has had with the Director of Public Safety, Adriana Lopez, and we've effectively tried to come up with some avenues that streamline code enforcement and also, again, achieve voluntary compliance. And I'll go through some of these really quick, but you can see at the top, the Director of Public Safety has worked with our office, and we've created kind of a two-tiered system. One of his, city prosecutor, open-door policy. One of his, City Prosecutor Open Door Policy and Monthly City Prosecutor Meetings. The City Prosecutor Open Door Policy has been very effective. The Director of Public Safety has given the green light for code officers to come in and talk to me on any of their cases that they have that they feel that they're running into an issue with. This enables them to get my advice on direction on how to close a case, and that's been very, very effective, and that's helped get that number down. On the other side of it is the monthly city prosecutor meetings. Again, the Director of Public Safety wants to be involved in these monthly city prosecutor meetings. She's in attendance in this meetings. What we do, we go over the cases that are on the matrix, and also, it gives the opportunity for each one of the officers to have an open line of communication to us in those meetings with cases that they may have that are not on the matrix. And that's been very effective. With that, we also have what are known as ride-alongs with code enforcement and city prosecutor staff. My paralegal, Stephanie Garcia, who I commonly refer to as my Erin Brockovich, she can find anybody, she can work very, very well with all the officers, as well as with the code violators, and I have her ride along with the officers to visit all the properties that are either on the matrix or want to be on the matrix. And we get a good assessment of what those issues are, so we can use our toolbox to try to achieve what compliance we can get on it. That's been very successful, and that's part of the open-door policy. Under the open-door policy itself, we have two items. We have code enforcement officer training with my office, and we have code enforcement officers work with my office. The officer training is something that we have started doing over the last couple of years, and this enables us to work with the officers and train them on specific issues that they need to know in dealing with code enforcement. Give you an example, we had some training on how to prepare declarations when we go to court, especially for inspection warrants or abatement warrants. Code officers, we help them with those declarations to learn how to assess a case, assess the facts, keep the notes, so that they can come up with a declaration. I will say that, the reason why that is important is because no one knows a code enforcement case better than the officer. They are the people that are in the trenches, and their case file is such that they are very intimately involved. I rely heavily on those officers and their knowledge of the case. So when it comes down to presenting documentation, if we have to go to court, I need them to know how to prepare declarations so that I can rely on that. That's part of it. We also have training with the vehicle abatement regulations that we have. We deal with how to deal with court actions. We deal with inspections. What are the limitations for inspections on private property according to the Fourth Amendment under the U.S. Constitution, because they have limited rights on how to do inspections, and so we help them achieve that. So they can come back and feel comfortable that, hey, look, this is exactly what we're looking for. If they get consent from the property owner, that consent has to be limited to what the property owner wanted them to look at, and if there is something else beyond that, then they can report back to my office, and then we can try to get a court-ordered inspection warrant. We also will be working with them on other items, like, for instance, at the last meeting, we went over the new street or sidewalk vendor ordinance. We're going to be working with all the officers next week, according to, Adriana Lopez wanted me to do that training with them, to let them know what are the issues, what the restrictions, and what they can and cannot do under that ordinance. And so it's very beneficial with them. The officers work with our office. Again, we encourage the officers to come to us, to talk to us if they have issues, because right now, and I think as Kelly Tatum stated in her presentation, the law's changing a lot and it's getting more complicated. And so we want to encourage officers to come to us and talk. One of the things that code enforcement officers are required to do is complete a certain number of classes under what is known as that California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. That's a program that they have to go and get, take a certain number of classes to be accredited or accreditation and their certification. They meet these classes, but we've noticed that a lot of times, they come back and they talk to me, and they said, hey, John, you know, we hear these classes, but every time the presenter will sit there and say, this is what we're going to tell you about this, but you need to talk to your city attorney or city prosecutor and get more detailed information how it's going to be applied to your city. As a result of that, we've talked to the Director of Public Safety, Adriana Lopez, and so she has implemented a policy now where every time they go to a training, they come back and tell us what that training is, then I can do additional training with them on that subject matter as it relates to the city of Paramount, because not all code enforcement is applied equally to every city, and the policies are different. Just like your policy is voluntary compliance, we want to make sure that that training revolves around that, and that's been very successful. So that's some of the policies that have happened and are occurring, and we find those successful at this point. One of the things that we implemented a while back, or what is known as voluntary compliance meetings, under the voluntary compliance program. This is a program where we have, our office sends out a letter, and essentially, the property owner or the code enforcement officer has a case, and they can't get anywhere with the property owner or the tenant for one reason or the other. And so what we do is that we have, we send out a letter to the property owner or the tenant, and we basically invite them to come in. Now, one thing that we've learned in all the years in code enforcement, every code enforcement case has a story, and you don't know what that story is until you talk with the individual, because sometimes there may be code violations on property as a result of the property owner or the tenant having financial difficulties. They know there's a problem, but they're going through some tough times. We don't know that. There could be issues where the tenant has issues with the property owner not fixing something. There could be issues where the property owner is having tenant that's not doing something according to the lease agreement, and so we don't know that. So rather than going in guns a-blazing right away, we instituted this voluntary compliance program. And what this is, we started this in 2012. We've had over 143 compliance meetings to date. That's a lot of meetings when you look at it, because these type of meetings may ultimately, if we didn't have these meetings and we didn't try to achieve voluntary compliance, they could have gone into court, and that would have been an expensive process to do. As a result of a compliance meetings, we, really, what we try to do is that we try to get the property owner or the tenant in, and we explain to them what violations exist on the property. When we send out what is known as a notice of violation, the code enforcement officer sends out a notice of violation identifying the violations that exist on the property. They're given an X amount of days to correct it. If they don't correct it, then sometimes it is given to us, and we have these meetings. We want to know why. So we sit down in a non-adversarial environment, and we ask them, what is, do you understand the violations, and why is it happening? They give us their story, and you'd be surprised. Sometimes we'll get a story from people that are really, really hurting financially. Sometimes they have a death in the family. Sometimes they lost their job. Sometimes they just don't want to do anything, and that's the purpose, is to ascertain that. And then we can go into our toolbox and figure out how to deal with it. What we try to do then at the end of these meetings is that we talk to them, and we say, will you be able to correct these violations? A lot of times, they say, yes, we will if you give us some time. So we say, how much time do you need? And they will give us a time. It's coming from them. What we'll do is that we'll draft up what is known as a compliance agreement right then and then there. They sign that agreement. So now they're bound by almost a contractual relationship with us. And what happens is, if they abide by the terms of the agreement, everything is good, and we got voluntary compliance. If they don't, and we have to go to court, we bring that agreement as an attachment to the judge, and the judge will look at it and say, will you agree to this? So there's no excuse. So it works. As a result of that, we have had property owners sign 136 out of 143 compliance agreements. We've gotten a success rate of 95% to sign an agreement. What's really interesting is that the number of cases that we've closed due to these compliance agreements has been 112 or 82% success rate. That means we didn't have to go to court, we didn't have to issue a citation, and we didn't have to take legal action. It was done by voluntary. And so sometimes it takes a little time, but ultimately, when you work with individuals, they get it done. So it's been a very successful program. Some of them, we refer on to an administrative hearing officer for a possible abatement. Those are six cases, and the current number of cases scheduled for voluntary compliance right now are six. So we're getting those numbers down, and they're working. Now, as I think Kelly Tatum also said, one of the things about code enforcement in our office is, we work with all departments. And you know, it really, really, we can't say that any of this would be possible or successful without the help of other departments. So I wanted to let you know that this is a teamwork effort, and two of the biggest departments that we constantly work with is community development and building and safety. Community development, when we have issues involving zoning, community development, we want to get them involved in, because then they can help with the property owner as to, can they build something in the zone if they want to do something? We get them to help us to talk with them. Building a safety department is critical, because they know the building code better than anybody. And a lot of times, if we have to go on properties, we'll bring somebody from building and safety to get an assessment. They'll give us an assessment of what the violations are, and also, then they'll be able to help us as to what can be done. Furthermore, building safety is in charge of signing off and recording substandard conditions of the property, which is a record against the property, and very useful, because if nothing else happens, that recorded documents on the property, if they want to refinance or sell the property, it pops up, and all of a sudden, the sale is contingent upon these corrections being done. I have to also give kudos to our Finance and Public Works Department. Finance works with us on a lot of different issues, and of course, Public Works does, when we get to a point of abatement, we rely on Public Works, because they're going to send their people out, and if it requires demolition, they're the only ones that know how to do it, and they give us a good assessment of how much it's going to cost. So those departments are very, very critical, and of course, on a limited scale, too, we will also work with the Sheriff's Department on issues. If we have to go out to property, we're not going to let our code enforcement officers go out there when there's a possible criminal action as well, so we get the Sheriff's Department involved, and they've been very, very, very helpful. So again, this is a very conservative effort, and I want the council to know that this cannot be done without their help. The next thing are administrative citations. Administrative citations are a very, very good tool. Essentially, they are used in addition to all other legal remedies, criminal and civil, which may be pursued by the city to address violations. That's in our code. How we use those? We use them strategically. We use them to gain voluntary compliance by a tenant, property owner, or both. As we'll see later on in some of the other before and after scenes, administrative citations are a good way to bring the parties to the table so that we can reach a resolution. Nobody likes to get a citation, and the way the code reads, we can give a citation technically or legally every day for every violation. We've tried to implement what is known as a three-citation rule. A three-citation rule is basically is that the officer will give a citation out, they'll wait for a correction. If that's us done, another citation is issued. If that's not done, a third one is. If there is no correction after the third citation, it doesn't necessarily make sense that they're going to correct it by a citation, especially if it's a business owner, because sometimes a business owner will pay the citation as a cost of doing business. So what we try to do is that we want any business owner or property owner to realize that when an officer gives a citation, they mean business. So the officer needs to get the respect that's due them when that citation is issued. If it doesn't get corrected after three, it goes to our office, and then we write a letter, and that lets them know that the officer is going to pass it up to our department, and we'll take care of it. That's been very effective. That's an exception. We don't use that all the time, and there are times where citations over a period of time are effective. In specific cases, both the city prosecutor, our office, and the public safety director, we can waive administrative citations where there's a good-faith effort by the property owner to correct those code violations. So we don't necessarily always want to use that as a hammer, but we want to have that existent, and if the property owner, for whatever reason, or the tenant wants to correct it, and it's a large issue, sometimes we can waive those citations, because then they can use that money to correct the violations. These are inspection warrants. Inspection warrants are issued by the Compton Superior Court. Inspection warrants under code enforcement, the standard of review for an inspection warrant is that there has to be reasonable probability that something exists that's in violation. The standard is a little bit different than criminal inspection warrants or search warrants, which is probable cause, but for Compton Superior Court, they don't necessarily make that distinction. They make us, almost make it full proof that there's an issue. I'll give you an idea. When we first started dealing with these type of issues, whether they were inspection warrants or abatement warrants, and Kelly also gave this, and we had the same issue, Compton Superior Court is not really receptive to handing out these warrants or abatements. They're dealing with, and I'm not saying these are little issues, but they're dealing with really, really bad issues, and a lot of times, they just don't hear our voice. It's taken a while for us to establish, I think, a good working relationship with the judges there, and as a result of that, we've been successful in getting inspection warrants. And in front of you is an example of the number of properties where we've gotten inspection warrants, been able to ascertain what those violations are, and if they're not corrected, those warrants then become an exhibit to an abatement. And also, the inspection warrants enabled us to let the property owner know what exactly is wrong with the property, so that they can make the necessary corrections. Of course, the next one is court-ordered abatement. That's the most severe case. Again, these were rarely, rarely granted to us by the Compton Superior Court. We've been somewhat successful lately. The number of cases heard by independent hearing officer, these are administrative judges that grant orders. We've had six of those. Those cases that are heard by actually the Compton Superior Court has been 12. These are actual abatements now, so where the court has granted us the remedy to either tear down a building and raise it, or to make substantial improvements to it. And so those are extreme cases. But you can see in this, we've had a number of properties where the court has granted abatement orders. We had two situations where we commenced abatement proceedings, but that's been enough for the property owner to either come forward or to say, look, I can't deal with this anymore. I'm going to sell the property, and what we've done is that we've dealt with the new property owner to correct the violations. Now, there's an old saying, a picture says a thousand words, and so we wanted to give you an example of some of the projects, some of the cases that have gone to the point where it got to our office and we had to almost initiate abatement action or legal action to get compliance. The first one is 6608 San Luis Street. This was a situation where there was a house that was called on fire. According to Fire Department, there was apparently a mechanical fire as a result, either a heating unit or something else that caused the fire. unit or something else that caused the fire. You can see it pretty much devastated the entire structure. And on a separate matter, that whole section of the wall fell down onto the street or to the alley. That was there for a while. And what we did is that we contacted the property owner. We found out that the property owner was in foreclosure. So it was very difficult because there really wasn't anybody to do anything with it. What we're able to do is, the property went to a short sale, but it fell through for some reason, and then it fell out of escrow. What we did is that we got in touch with somebody else and they cleaned up all that brick and put it in the yard. And what we did was, we wanted to make sure that it was unsafe for anybody living there, including hoarders, that sometime we had there. So again, building and safety red-tagged that building. And what red-tag means essentially is no one can enter or occupy that structure until it's fixed. We also posted a notice on the property of our intent to commence an abatement of the property, which in this case, this property couldn't be repaired, it had to be demolished. It was interesting because once we did that, then whoever was interested in the property came forward and they started making improvements to the property on a smaller scale. You can see that that property's been approved a bit. But what's really interesting is that there's another auction for the property on September 12th. Another buyer can buy the property. Also, the city is now considering to purchase the property in order to satisfy their affordable housing requirements. So in the end, this is going to be a win-win situation for us. Here we have is on 7600 Rosecrans. And these cases I'm showing you right now are cases that have been closed. This was an interesting case. It was a four-unit property, three units in the residential in the rear and a business unit in front. You can see these were dilapidated and deteriorated units. The doors didn't shut and we didn't get any compliance with that. We commenced abatement proceedings and lo and behold, we finally got the property owner to come forward and say, okay, let's work with community development. And so what they wanted to do is, they weren't sure, should we go commercial, we should show residential. We pointed them in direction of the community development department and the staff over there worked with the property owner to decide what would be the best use of the property. They immediately started improving the property and this is what they completed afterwards. So it came from a very dilapidated structures to a combination of residential buildings that have really beautified the area. The case was closed as a result of that. The next case, you're probably very familiar with this property. It's 114113 Downing Avenue. This is known as the Five Star Market. The Five Star Market property was purchased by a property owner, a developer who wanted to develop the property. And as you can see, the property was somewhat neglected as a result of it. The property owner really had the intent to develop the property, but they ran into some financial problems. When we got the case, the property was several years old and we got in touch with the property owner and we basically said, look, they put a lot of money into it, but they couldn't, didn't seem to finish it. So we worked with them, said, how can you finish the property? At least, let's start with cleaning the property up. So we worked with them. They had boats, and this wasn't the property owner. These property owners were in Texas. So they were kind of absentee property owners. People would bring boats on the property or cars and leave them there. And we would tell them, look, you got to clean this property up, at least keep it presentable. We would call them on a weekly basis and they would be very, very receptive to try to clean it. As you can see, the property is in, is a pretty good shape as far as cleanliness right now. But what they're doing is, they are putting together plans and specifications to develop the property. And this is what they're doing at this point. This is for illustration purposes only, but what they've done, they submitted plans into community development. Again, community development and our office and code enforcement has worked together and the developers finally presented some plans to come in. We are hopeful that these will be finalized and the property owner has said that they are, they are, they are, the goal is to break ground at the end of 2019. We're very, very hopeful that, we believe the developer will do that. This is 6803 72nd Street. This was an efficiency apartment above the garage that was built without a permit, severely dilapidated. There is an unsafe stairwell and landing, unpermitted plumbing, faulty defective and unpermitted electrical wiring. There is accumulated junk, combustible materials, deteriorated and sagging roof on both buildings. This was a mess. And when we got ahold of the building, we tried to work with the individual. The owner of the property was passed away, which makes it difficult because it can go into probate and last for years. What we were able to do is that we were able to work with one of the relatives and we basically said that we were going to commence abatement proceedings unless they corrected it. Because then it becomes a public safety issue. You can see that the condition of the property was terrible. What we did is that we worked with them and they agreed to sell the property. They sold the property, the new property owner razed the entire buildings, the substandard buildings, and this is what they put up at this point. This is actually recent. They put up some new apartment-type complexes. And right now, this is going through plan check and permit approval through our building department. But you can see, this is a big difference from what it looked like before. The next property is, you're probably very familiar, this is on Indiana Avenue. This was a proposed four building, residential buildings along Indiana. Apparently, this was another case where the property owner simply lacked funding to complete the project. And as a result, the project was partially built, it rained, it looked into a, it became an eyesore. And we got a lot of complaints from the neighbors and they wanted something to do about it. We got involved in it and as you can see, it just became dilapidated. Now what happened is, when you look at this picture, you're going, you're probably thinking to yourself, this is a great after picture. Well, guess what? This is not the after picture. This is still the before picture. Because what the property owner did was, they basically made a facade on the outside to make it look like it was pretty good. But the inside was nothing. It was like a movie, what do you call it? Just a facade. And so the property owner would not allow us to go inside to look at it. When this case was being handled, code enforcement officer Betty Castro was able to convince the property owner to go inside and take pictures. We went to court on an abatement warrant. And we went to court initially, the judge looked at the picture and said, why should I give you a warrant to abate based on what this looks like? And I, and he was right. So we had to come back and the officer took pictures of the inside. And when the judge saw that, hey, the inside was, was, was nothing. It was just a structure, a facade. He gave us permission and granted our warrant for an abatement. And as a result of that abatement, we demolished the entire complex. We collected our abatement costs of over $40,000 because there was a lot of abatement done. And we sold it to another, another property owner bought it. And this is what the property owner did with Indiana. They built three complexes up there, changed the neighborhood, and the residents there were very, very happy and you can see they're occupied at this point. So this was a big improvement on Indiana. The next property that resulted in an abatement is 14060 Anderson Street. This was basically an unoccupied, abandoned building and a structure. It was dilapidated and what needed to be done was, it needed to be raised from the ground up. There was also a lot of bougainvillea vegetation growing along the side, which obstructed parking on the street. And you can see, this is what happened to it. We got the abatement, went in, and you can see, this is the, the abatement process, again, public works was involved with it and they proceeded to knock down the building. And as you can see, what they have now is that the lot has been cleared. This property here is 1662729 Eureka Avenue. This property was interesting because there was, there was a lot of overgrown vegetation, but what really made us concerned is that we brought building and safety over as a result of an inspection warrant, and we discovered this breezeway. This breezeway connected the rear unit to the front unit. And you can see, there was water damage, it was ready to fall apart. But that wasn't the real problem. The real problem was, we notified the property owners and they began to try to correct it. So the first thing they did, they got rid of the breezeway. But what they didn't do is that they still had tenants in that back unit. So you had a exit door going out to a drop-down. And those tenants also had a four-year-old. So we told the property owner, you've got to clear the tenants out of this building or we're going to go in and we're going to red-tag it. So we finally, we got them to do it and they started, they cleared out the tenants, they cleared all the vegetation in the front, and now they're working with community development to basically remodel the house, in which case, they're going to sell it. So we closed that case as well. Then the other case we have is, this is on 15930 Downing Avenue. Now this looks like a public street, but it isn't. It's basically a very long driveway along a private commercial center. That evidently became dilapidated. What was interesting about this case is that it just existed, people would drive over and, and there were some holes that were much bigger than this. And they would also then file a claim with the city saying, hey, it went over this big pothole and it damaged my wheel, thinking it was a city property. Wasn't city property, it was private property. And what we did is that we had a compliance meeting and we found out that two brothers owned this property and they were suing each other. So nothing was getting done. So what we did, we basically brought both of those brothers in and said, it doesn't make any difference who owns the property. We're going to hold you both responsible for it. So get it cleaned up. They, as you can see, they did it. So they started completely redoing that entire parkway and this is what it looks like today. This was a result of just getting them together, putting some pressure on them of going legal if we needed to. And they basically repaved, resealed, restripped the property. And now we have a decent driveway in a commercial area. The last project or we dealt with was 7516 Rosecrans Avenue. This particular property, I know city manager John Moreno was very involved, then we'd get complaints all the time on it. Because basically, what we had here was, we had a commercial property, this is known as the farmer's market. There was storage of illegal pallets outside of the business, there was illegal storage practice of grocery store equipment, large exhibits and display cases, and it overtook a parking lot right there. If you notice, if you see the black car on the far right, that parking, along with all that shared parking, was for the Milindo Sanola Restaurant. People, patrons who visited the restaurant could not park along that area because it was being taken up by all the storage. And you can see in the back lot, it was all there. What we did, and you can see, it just kept on getting bigger and bigger. The situation here was, we contacted the tenant and the property owner. Property owner said, we're having problems with the tenant, the tenant won't listen to us, what do we do? And we basically said, well, you've got to work with the tenant because it's your, it's your property. What was interesting, and code enforcement Betty Castro, who was in charge of this, made a suggestion and said, how about if we just, in this case, we cite the property owner every day to get them to do something? Well, lo and behold, she would go out every day and cite them. And so what happened is that the property owner then came and said, why am I being cited? We said, because you're ultimately responsible. Well, that precipitated them to put the heat on the tenant, they evicted the tenant, and then the cleanup occurred. And as you can see here, there's no storage on the front and there's no storage on the back. And this was, this was done, again, before we even took legal action by voluntary compliance, by using the administrative citation program. So that worked in this case. In a tough economy, we, we don't like to go to that, but if we have to, we've got to try to recover our costs. How do we recover code enforcement costs? Number one, we do it through administrative citations, due to special assessment liens. When we abate a property, we will also record an assessment lien on it. So when then property tax is due, the county will sit there and say, you pay this lien along with your property tax. That's how we got property from Anderson and Indiana paid. A lot of times, we'll get money from the franchise tax board because we'll report that. And then of course, there are receiverships where if we have to go to court and get a receiver, the court will order recovery of all costs. With that all said, what's next after all this? What we want to do is that because the laws are changing, we're going to have to update our municipal code to reflect the changing state and federal legislation. Our code is becoming a little bit outdated and so we want to update it to reflect that. We want to continue training with our code enforcement officers to stay current with those new state and federal laws. We don't want them to be behind the eight ball. We want them to know how the new laws are effect because the trend in California right now is to decriminalize a lot of this activity. They just don't want to. There's legislation that's being, being pushed right now to eliminate the 24-hour parking prohibition. In another district, a federal district, they've already ruled unconstitutional the chalking of tires on parking because it's an illegal search and seizure under the Fourth Amendment. We don't have to worry about that right now because it's in a different district, but it could come into California. The other thing that we tried to do, we want to try to do is, we want to temporarily stay issuance of administrative citations. Because when we have a property owner that had a lot of violations and they said, we're just going to sell the property, the new property owner is now inheriting that problem. And we, there are citations that will be issued, but we want to put a stay on them to get them to work with us, to cure the violations. And sometimes that works without, because they'll use that money to make the improvements rather than pay a citation. The last thing we want to do, we're working with the director, is to develop a code enforcement manual. This manual basically is, is essentially a rules and procedure manual for code enforcement officers to adhere to in basically all situations. So there's uniformity in enforcement. And that concludes my presentation. I hope you have a pretty good idea now of what our office does in code enforcement. If I can answer any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Questions? None at all, huh?
Excellent presentation, John.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Item 16, introduction of fiscal year 2020, proposed budget. Staff.
Yes, sir. You all received the proposed budget last week, right here. You all have it, so. And you also received a memo from me a few weeks ago that discussed some of the main components of this year's budget. So tonight, what we plan to do is give you an overview of the budget. They'll provide you with some overall highlights for your consideration. Then, as we do every year, the plan would be to have a more comprehensive review of the budget at the June 18th meeting. So between now and June 18th, I encourage you to ask us questions or provide as much feedback as you wish about the proposed spending plan. Now, the spending plan itself is balanced, however, as you'll soon hear, due to expenditures outpacing our revenues, we had to dip into one of our operating reserve funds to balance this budget. And as I mentioned, the memo to you that I spoke about just earlier, this means that we're in a structural deficit. I don't know how long. I don't know how long this will last, but what is certain is that we are, we need additional revenue, and as you saw and heard earlier tonight, one option available to the council would be to consider a sales tax measure. This is something that we, we will discuss at a later date. Now, in regards to this spending plan itself for the fiscal year 2020, we've not reduced levels from some of our key services, including public safety patrol services through the Sheriff's Department, road maintenance, tree trimming, building inspections, recreation programs, and community events. We also are presenting a robust capital improvement program for fiscal year 2020, which will include the construction of a brand-new water well. So again, as we do every year, the plan for tonight is just to show you an overview of the budget, and then have a more in-depth department-by-department discussion at the next council meeting on June 18th. So with that, I'll now turn it over to our Finance Director, Karina Lamb, who will give you an overview. Karina?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just one more I wanna add to John's introduction is that we're gonna bring back to you on June 18th for a very thorough review, and we hope to adopt the budget on that day so that we will have appropriations ready for next year's appropriations. With that, I'll start with revenues. In fiscal year 20, despite a slight drop in general fund revenues, when all revenues combined, including the general fund, the water utility fund, and restricted funds, total revenues about $48 million in fiscal year 20. Now, this is the same chart as the previous slide, which is the overall revenue. What we added here is a general fund component in gray color. As you can see, when comparing current year to the next year, we're budgeting close to $27 million in the general fund. There is a decrease in the general fund here, you can see from 27.1 million in current year to 26.9 million in next year. Again, I'll explain in the following slide. On the restricted category, we budgeted close to $21 million in fiscal year 20, about $3.5 million increase when comparing next year with this year. What make up that $3.5 million of various restricted funds, including CDBG funds, gas tax, transportation funds, also some new funding sources in Measure W for storm water management, and SCAG and SB2 grants that will be used for the specific plans in the community development department. Now, I do wanna point out that there is a $6.7 million source that is not included in the revenue here, because it's a loan that we secured from the I-Bank for the construction of the water well. When you see the expenditures, high expenditures later, please note that we do have a source for the expenditure. Earlier, we inserted general fund into the overall revenues. Here, we added sales tax into the general fund, which is in brown. Overall, sales tax will be at $7.9 million next year, and the overall general fund is projected at $26.9 million. As you can see, sales tax make up about 30% of the total unrestricted funds or the general fund. We are budgeting $200,000 decrease in the general fund next year. The bulk of the decrease is related to sales tax. In the current year, fiscal year 19, we have received some one-time sales tax revenues that we are not going to receive in fiscal year 20. Therefore, the slight decrease in fiscal year 20, it's just a, it's just a relative compared to the current year. The blue bar represents the non-sales tax portion of the general fund revenues, which includes motor vehicle license fees, property tax, permits, licenses, et cetera. We are budgeting motor vehicle license fees to be stagnant next year, because we see that new cost sales is now slowing down after a few years of record sales. That explained that why we budgeted for flat revenues for MVLF, motor vehicle license fee. Here's a history of our sales tax. Our assumption for next year is that fuel prices remains about the same, and retail establishments will remain about the same as well. The sales tax estimate is at about $8 million. While this is maintaining at a good level, just for comparison's sake, if you compare that to fiscal year 08, right before pre-recession, we're barely just a little bit over the level at that time. As part of the budget review, we'll look at a utility users tax as a follow-up to Measure P. As you know, Measure P passed in 2015, we have been receiving higher revenues since then. At the same time, we also experienced more utility users tax refund or exemption requests, which explains the decrease since 2016. For next year, we are budgeting about the same. UUT is a significant source of income to continue paying for essential services, especially after we lost redevelopment agency in 2012. We lost about $5 to $6 million a year of revenues since then. Again, UUT is a significant source of income and continue to pay for essential services. UUT has helped balance the volatility of sales tax when we heavily rely on fuels. We perform utility users tax analysis, making sure providers are submitting the correct percentage to the city. As for fees, the only proposed increase is business license fees. As the consumer price index was at 2.6% this past year, we're proposing a 2.6% increase next year. Next, we'll cover expenditures. The brown bar represents our operations, and the blue represents the capital improvements. In our operations, as you can see, when comparing current year to the next, there is a $2 million increase in expenditures. The increase includes, includes all the operational costs increased, such as contract rate increases from the Sheriff's Department for landscape maintenance, streets sweeping, contract, road maintenance, animal control, et cetera. Also included in this expenditure here is all the salaries and benefits, and the proposed cost of living adjustment of 3% for all full-time employees. Now, new items that are included in the operations in next fiscal year is the development of two specific plan documents. It costs us about $650,000, but is funded by grants. Also included is Measure W funding for storm water management to the tune of $500,000, and that explains the total increase in the restricted category. By the way, on June 18th, each department's gonna give you a lot more detail. As Tom mentioned, we're just doing overview tonight. As for capital improvements, we're budgeting over $13 million, about $6.7 million for the construction of a new water well. We also included a number of streets improvement projects and park and facility improvements. This chart shows you how our expenditures are distributed in our operating departments. In our operating budgets, not including water utility, is about $35 million. As you can see, among our operating departments, public safety has the largest expenditure. We're allocating 35% of our resources to the departments. With regard to community promotion, the budget contains funding for all city's signature special events, as always, and we continue funding for 16 community groups in fiscal year 20. The funding amount is based on a matrix formula, including the number of Paramount residents that are being served by the organization. A couple of highlights here, in the past, Su Casa is being funded as part of the community support from using CDBG funds. In fiscal year 20, Su Casa is now added to the community groups, and based on their funding request, we have budgeted $5,000 for this group. As for St. Francis, they have been on our funding list for many years, but since they have recently changed their status to for-profit, we no longer will fund this organization in fiscal year 20. Next, I'll touch on human resources. In fiscal year 20, we're proposing a 3% cost of living adjustments for all full-time employees as inflation was about 2.6% this past year. As pension costs continues to rise, for full-time classic employees, those who were hired prior to 2013, we are proposing for them to contribute to the pension that equals to 2% of their salaries. This will bring them closer to PAPRA employees, who were hired after 2013. Currently, all PAPRA employees are already paying 7% as required by the pension law. As part of the comprehensive class and com study that was just completed a few months ago, other than compensation recommendations, the study also identified deficiencies in positions, one of which is the community development director position. The position was eliminated as part of the layoff in 2012 due to the loss of redevelopment and recession. The study shows that a number of positions have been filling in in different capacity, and therefore, we are recommending to bring this position back. As a result, we're recommending a promotion of our assistant director to the director position, and also the principal planner to the assistant director position. With that, we're also recommending to eliminate the current principal planner positions, and more detail will be provided at a study session. As we are evaluating the efficiency of our operations, we're recommending to freeze two positions in fiscal year 20, including the recreation specialist position and a co-enforcement officer. The savings here will be more than enough to cover the cost increase in the community development department. And again, more detail will be covered at the study session. If you recall at mid-year, the salaries of three positions in Phase 1 that identified in the class and com study, they were adjusted up to move them closer to the salary range in the labor market. In fiscal year 20, the positions in Phase 2, there were a total of four, will be adjusted to Phase 3. It is our goal to face in adjustments over time to bring our salaries and benefits more competitive when compared to the labor market, and really to protect our most valuable assets, which is our employee. As for part-time, we have been adjusting the salaries to comply with the minimum wage law over the past few years. Therefore, a few positions will be adjusted as well in fiscal year 20. The minimum wage will be at $13 per hour next year. In public safety, it is our single largest department. In fiscal year 20, we have budgeted $12.2 million for the department. That includes 5% contract increase for the sheriff's contract, an additional 0.5% increase to the liability trust fund to a total of 11%. Including the budget is the contract increase also for crossing guard and animal control. At budget time, not only we review the cost of providing services, we also evaluate the effectiveness of our operation and services. For animal control, we're satisfied with the services provided by SIACCA, which allow us to review the dedicated officer's contract. At this time, we believe that the dedicated officer is not necessary anymore, and we're proposing to eliminate the position in fiscal year 20. We also, we align the crossing guard services and lower the overall contract cost. Other than that, the department will continue funding for neighborhood preservation, and they continue to have an active neighborhood watch program as well. For recreation, not only they are maintaining the current level of services, including Star After School Program, also, the budget contains, continues to support for PEP, which is the nonprofit organization the city has established for scholarship purposes. New events that are established in the current year will continue, such as the Heritage Festival and Veterans Event will continue next year. And as always, Recreation Department will continue to maintain and improve our parks and facilities. In Public Works, there is another big department we have, they handle maintenance of all facilities, landscape vehicles, and roads. The budget keeps the same level of services next year, they also absorb all contract rate increases such as landscape maintenance and streets sweeping. Included in the operation also sidewalk repairs. In addition, additional appropriation for environmental compliance, such as for storm water management, has been included. Currently, we are in compliance with all the legal requirements, however, with the new funding that's provided by Measure W, we'll be expanding the storm water compliance program in fiscal year 20. As for vehicle, we are proposing to purchase two lease vehicles for the department. In water utility, we mentioned about the new water well construction, this also comes with a debt service that we borrow from the I-Bank. And in addition, we continue to do the installation of services in hydrant, and we continue our programs such as annual valve replacement, and the department is also requesting for one new lease replacement vehicle. In terms of water rates, as you know, even with continued efforts in improving our infrastructure, building a new well just a few years ago, and we're in the middle of building a new well, we continue to maintain some of the lowest rates in the region. As we are always very sensitive to what we charge to our water customers, the last rate increase took place in June 2016. However, as you know, we have been reporting a deficit in the water fund for quite some time. In order to maintain a good financial standing, even for debt service purposes, we are undergoing a comprehensive water rates study currently. Now, you may recall that we have done similar studies in the past, however, the recommendations have been very drastic in the past. We are now working with another consultant that we believe that shares the same values and sensitivity to our community and demographics, and we hope to complete the water rate study in the next few months, and we'll bring recommendation for your consideration soon. Fiscal year 20, we're posing a deficit once again. Keep in mind that the revenue here is based on pre-rate increase, so we should have better financial outlook if we finish the water rate study and bring to you some rate adjustments in the future. Next is our capital improvements. As always, we have ambitious CIP programs. We're projecting close to $14 million for projects in 2020, of that, $6.8 million for water, $6.3 million for streets, $430,000 for parks, and about $260,000 for other projects. The bulk of the $6.7 million in water is related to the construction of a new well. As for streets, a number of projects were funded by transportation funds. As for parks, we have applied for a number of grants now from the state and the county. If successful, we'll be able to add to the $430,000 here, and we'll keep you posted. As you can see, here's a list of other capital improvement projects. Other than the water well, we have, we have projects using SB1 gas tax and other transportation funds, which we'll be using for arterial street resurcings and other neighborhood street improvements. We'll continue to address the median and converting it to drought-tolerant landscape, also replacing the city entry monument signs to bring consistency in the community. On park and facility improvements, we'll have a number of improvements as well, including Paramount Pool improvements, Paramount Park picnic shelter improvements, and carpet replacement and Mary Poser Building. All these projects are funded by restricted grants and capital improvement project reserve. For the general fund, despite expenditures continue to outpace revenues, by using reserve that we saved up over the years, including the capital improvement project reserve and equipment replacement fund, also the first time the pension reserve that we have saved over the year, we have over $1.7 million in that fund, we're able to balance the budget without touching the general fund reserve. Here's a history of general fund surpluses and deficits. At the end of the fiscal year in 20, we're breaking even. That is the same for the current year, we're breaking even as well. Of course, this is a forecast, we don't have a crystal ball, this is the best that we know based on the information we have. We hope that when we close our books for the current year, we'll have better news like we have done in the past. When we fast-forward, at the end of the fiscal year 2020, this is our ending balance. General fund, we have $12.7 million, restricted funds, $7 million, and water fund, $3.6 million. As for subsidy agency, we continue to wind down the business of the former redevelopment agency, fulfilling the responsibility of the bond issues and various party contracts and agreements. The budget here reflects the enforceable obligations reported on our ROBS and the tax increments that we expect to receive to be able to pay for those obligations. Effective last July, the county has taken over the oversight board's function, however, we're still responsible for the managing of funds and the submission of the ROBS, which is the recognized obligation payment schedule. As for housing authority, the budget is a holdover from the former redevelopment agency's low moderate housing fund, which we have received, just a limited way, we allow only a limited way to use the funding. In fiscal year 20, we'll continue to explore ways to utilize these funds for housing opportunities. With that, I'd like to thank all the departments. I wish I had pictures like John Kavanaugh for different departments. I really wanna thank each one for your help. It's been a long process and a different process for us. It's our first time we're trying to balance the budget and seeing very clearly expenditure outpacing revenues, but with everyone's help, we, we did it. And like John mentioned, this is a solid budget, we are maintaining the same service, we're doing the same level of events and programs that we continue to do, and on June 18th, we'll bring you more details, and we ask for you to establish, on June 18th, as a day for further review of the budget, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions at this time?
I have questions, but I don't wanna go first if anybody else wants to go, because mine might be a little bit lengthy, so if anybody wants to go before me, feel free.
I actually spent about an hour with the city manager this afternoon, so I got all my questions answered, so you're free to have my time.
Okay, so first, I wanna be clear that, well, let me ask this question first. So this is a budget that's going to be proposed. So this is a budget that's going to be proposed in two weeks and passed, correct?
Yes.
If all goes well. Okay, so then I have to mention my concerns. And the first thing I want to say is this is not a personal attack on anybody who sits in a certain position. I would ask anybody the same questions if I had these questions to whomever sat in these seats. So I want to make that clear. And I'm stating that because I've been accused of being a cheerleader for the union, comparing me to a teen with pom poms or a teen with pom poms opposed to an advocate for employee rights. I spent a large portion of my career advocating for employees, so that's what I brought to the table as an elected. So if somebody doesn't like the fact that I'm going to speak up when I think somebody's being short-sighted, well, let me apologize. Well, I'm actually not apologizing. Let me just say I find that mildly interesting. So with that being said, in the own report, it says that the local economy remained steady, expenditures continue to increase, outpacing revenue, the budget is solid, blah, blah, blah. The objectives of the Paramount, and we want to carry out the objectives of the city council. First, I want to make clear that these are not my objectives. I know I'm always one to four, but this isn't my point of view. And I guess what I'll just start with, my biggest heartburn in reading most of this was the classic employees. When a classic employees came to work for the city, and they were, they entered into an agreement with the city that they didn't pay into their pension. So now we want to have them start paying into a pension because next year we could be going into deeper funds, which I understand, but this is nothing new. Pensions have been looked at for decades as far as who needs to pay what. I think the issue I have here is for classic employees, and I think there's 20 of them if I read that correctly, and most on the lower end of the pay spectrum, not all of them, but most. And then we talk about COLA raises. And so if we take, let's say, a turd, and we put a bow on it, and we say, here, it's still a turd. So my, this is what I'm trying to convey. If you say we're going to give a COLA raise of 3%, but you're going to now have to start paying into 2%, so really you're still getting 1%. You're really still getting the short end of the deal because higher ends that are making $300,000 or $240,000 are getting a full 3% COLA raise. And if I did my math correctly, if you're making about $220,000, what we're proposing a COLA raise, that's about $6,600. For the working poor who are making $35,000, $45,000, $55,000, we're talking about $1,200 to $1,500 a year. But now I'm going to take away $900 because you got to pay into your pension. So now you're not getting 3% COLA, you're actually getting 1%. So be happy with making an additional almost $25 a month. But when you're living on $40,000 a year and you're looking forward to a COLA raise, knowing that we've had these issues with pensions, we shouldn't now be asking, start paying 2%. When up here, you're still getting your full COLA and getting that $6,600, $6,600, $6,700. We need to be fair. So what other options do we have? In my opinion, which I know will be one to four, we could do this. We could say bifurcate the two, employees making over $100,000 a year versus those making under $100,000 a year. Instead of having employees having to pay, classic employees having to pay 2%, why not do it in increments? We've known this has been coming for decades. So why not start instead of, hey, we're taking away your 3% and giving you 1%? Start with 1% or a half a percent. Other option would be, why do we have to take away from them at this point anyway? I know pensions are an issue, and maybe eventually legally, they probably do need to start paying into it, but I don't think it needs to be 2% all at once, not when we're having some employees that are going to be making $6,600 off of it, and then we're asking the lower end to make $25. That, to me, is a big inequity, and we're almost entering into a gray area there. So furthermore, on the budget, which I didn't really get a chance to ask, because we know why I don't go into closed session anymore. When I look at the budget for the city manager and the city clerk, we're looking at $1 million. So that's another reason why I don't see cutting from the bottom end of the scale. John, if you knew we were going into a pension, and you know we're spending more money on the budget, maybe a deficit next year, it didn't stop you in February for asking for 5% more. Are you also getting a 3% COLA?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So it didn't stop you in February for asking for 5% more and securing your future, which is your right. You came to council, they gave it to you, and you secured 12-month severance. All I'm asking is that the lower end of employees have that same opportunity to secure their future. It's hard making it on $35,000, $45,000, $55,000, and you might not realize because you make $300,000. And if we look at your combined benefits, it's going to exceed. And the reason why I say, let's look at your combined benefits, or anybody in that on page four, what is it, page 44, combined benefits, there's still about $300,000. And I don't know, do we pay into still 401Ks and 457s for our staff? I don't know that. All I know is there seems to be a big inequity as far as the working class, and it just doesn't have to be that way. There's other options that we can refer to. There's a lot of places that we can cut before we make an employee pay 2% off the bat. They deserve a 3% COLA raise. We could even bifurcate the two and go, top end, you get 1% this time. I'm just throwing out ideas. You get 1% this time, we're going to give 3% COLA here. But to just do it across the board and not take it into the pay scale into consideration just doesn't sit well with me, nor should it with anybody. There's a lot of benefits we can cut in-house prior to making that 2%. I asked previously, let's look at what we pay into the chamber, $64,000 a year. I still think that's too much in comparison to other cities like us. It was ignored. I asked to bifurcate. I was ignored. I'm not going to sit here and keep everybody here longer and talk about revenue and things that we brought in, thinking that it was going to be more revenue when it wasn't. But I am going to question page 44, which is the city manager and city clerk. I looked at Lana on Clear and Transparent, it's $166,000 with benefits, so that's not adding up to that 1 million. Now, I know the $68,400 in maintenance operations is jumping to $141,000 possible because of elections. Okay, but there's still a few hundred missing. Cell phones. Why don't we cut cell phones at the top then if we're just willing to cut our bottom, our lower? The guys who are working the front, the line, working the worker bees, they use their own cellphone. They don't get car allowance, they don't get cell phones, they don't get a lot of the perks that management gets. And to say, oh, because we have a degree, it's not good enough. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this proposed budget. Like I said, it probably won't go anywhere, but these are the things that need to be said. And so I will bring up more issues on the next one, but I'm hoping we can come back with something that takes into account the issues that I raised, because there's some big inequities. And we talk about, let's give people pay to make them equitable, to make them competitive with other cities. Well, guess what? We're already there. So when we start giving more raises and shuffling chairs, that was the other topic. We want us now put a development chair, we're going to use the same three, we're going to take away responsibilities from one person, we're going to give you a different title, and with that title comes a promotion. But you guys over here, 2%. Let's do something better. That's what I'm asking, just to come back with something more fair that everybody can live with. Because for two years, I've talked about this bifurcation, and nobody's wanted to hear about it. Nobody still wants to hear about it, but it needs to be said. Because when you're making 300, 220, 175, that's a whole lot easier than somebody making $45,000. And now, even though you came on making a certain amount and we paid the pension, now we're not going to. But we're still going to take COLA raises on the top. Not fair. That's it.
Any further questions? You already had yours answered? Nothing else at this point?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I just could, I just, a lot of these points that were raised, I just wanted to point out a few things for clarity, the way, you know, that I understood the budget and what we're doing to show about diligence, if you don't mind. First of all, it's important to note that the state is requiring all employees to pay their full pensions going forward. So all the employees that were hired after 2013 have to pay the full 8% of their pension. So the 2% that we're looking at in the budget actually is our effort to be incremental and to put them in line with the 30 or so employees that we have that are paying 8% right now, who are in the same departments doing the same job because of what the state law requires. Also, looking at the COLA for the 3% was an effort to give a raise, which would result in the 1%. That's correct. But not take anything out of the employee's check because out of the 3%, the 2% that you're looking at to put back into their PERS program, which across the board in every city around us is happening, I'm part of two other boards where this has come up, especially the sanitation, which there's quite a controversy over that. And, you know, they're used to getting it, they don't want to give it up, but the state saw that it wasn't even sustainable, so changed the law on it, so it's something that does have to happen. I would also just say, it's easy to throw out numbers, but it's important to look at comparing the employees that we have in upper management to other cities who are like us, and their salaries are very comparable. You have to be able to compete with people for talent and good management, and we are not paying at the high end for our employees. We're right there in the middle. In most cases, we keep a close eye on that and review it carefully. As far as something as simple, please don't interrupt me. As far as something as simple as cell phones, I think that we are asking our department heads of managers to be on call 24 hours a day, so therefore it's necessary that they have a means to be able to do that. I think that for years, we have shown a commitment to our employees, and they are number one, and they are first, and we've sustained this paying of the full pension for as long as we're able to. Revenues are flat, we have to get things from somewhere. We can certainly look at budget cuts in any area that we have, that's why we have the meeting, you know, going forward. And I think the last thing is just to clarify that the 3% COLA, I'm sorry, the PERS contribution of 2% is across the board, it is with management too, it's not just with the lower level employees. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And there you have it, ladies and gentlemen, one to four.
We're not going to go back and forth here. Councilmember, you have any further questions?
I have something.
Oh, motions in order?
I see you filed the report.
No, 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 we need a motion to establish June 18 for further review and adoption.
Make the motion, we establish June 18 as the day we adopt the budget.
Second.
Okay. Lou by Hofmeyer, second by Lemon to establish June 18 for further review and adoption of fiscal year 2020 proposed budget. We have, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Comments and committee reports, councilmembers will start down here today.
Okay. I would first like to say that I would like to commend the public work staff, and especially the parks and recreation staff for the phenomenal job that you did on the Heritage Fair. I just thought it was incredible. Yeah, they deserve a big hand, they did an amazing job.
Definitely.
It was, it was really something to stand up on stage and look at the street being packed from one end of the fair to the other. I think it made a huge difference moving it to the main boulevard, so kudos for that. I would also really like to thank all of the committee members who did the parade. I know we had Brenda Olmos and Mike McCowen who were co-chairs, and they were backed up, you know, terrifically by, I know Cindy Gillan and Rebecca Gillan and other members of that committee, and you guys just all did a phenomenal job. It went off without a hitch, people had a great time. You know, just thank you for taking on that tremendous workload and doing it. I think you did a wonderful thing for our city. I also would like to report that I attended the conference in Indian Wells, the Contract Cities Conference. There was a lot of really good information there. One of the things that we heard about that was really satisfying to hear is that the SB 50, which is the developers and density bill, was stalled until January, they'll look at it again. And that was going to have a tremendous impact on our city, so Contract Cities all got together, and I can't remember the name of the senator who...
Senator Anthony Portantino.
Portantino. Kind of carried that ball for us and really helped to have them take a second look at that, so that's greatly appreciated. There were seminars on active shooters, rethinking how we manage a crisis, and lots of terrific information that took place in those classes. And we also had an opportunity to have a sit-down with Commander Wallach and, is it Chief Cross or Gross?
Steve Gross.
Steve Gross. And they had nothing but high praise for the city of Paramount, and especially all the support that we give to the sheriff's department, that whenever they have a need, we're there to back them up. And Commander Wallach especially talked about the evolution of our city and how far it's come, and how, he calls us the little miracle, it was great to see. So it's nice that we have the support of those officials, the fire and the police, which in the rethinking a crisis class, they said, was essential to get through a crisis. So the conference was interesting and glad I attended. Thank you, sir.
Well, there's no sense me repeating everything that you said, because I was at the festival, and I was at Indian Wells, and it was very well, and it was a great conference, so I'll just let you listen to it once.
There you go.
Ditto. The only thing I want to say is search your souls.
And I want to commend the parade committee, the Gillan sisters, and Brenda Olmos, and Velma Stallings, and all the others that were on the committee. It was a success. It was so nice to see so many of the Paramount residents out and waving and greeting us, and it was excellent, so thank you so much. And the Heritage Festival was awesome. It was so many, so many people. It was excellent. And I also like to share something personal. After 25 years of representing our wonderful city, I'm announcing tonight that I will be retiring from the city council on June 7. I want to thank everyone in Paramount for the support they have given me. It has been the greatest honor in my life to serve you and to help make the city a successful community, one that we were all, we are all proud to call home. Paramount has made great strides in the last 25 years. Our countless achievements are due entirely to you, the residents of this community who have chosen honest, forward-thinking leaders. Because of your support, we have eliminated blight, brought in great businesses, we built our parks and streets, and created programs that benefit everyone. I have no doubt that our tradition of excellence in service to the community will remain strong. I urge everyone to continue electing leaders with the same dedication, integrity, and focus so that progress is not interrupted. As I leave office, I am incredibly thankful for the wonderful council colleagues I have worked with for so many years. I have learned so much from their wisdom and expertise, but most of all, I learned what it means to work together, to be united in vision and purpose. Positive changes are not possible without unity. It has also been an honor to work with the talented and dedicated city staff. My decision to retire is related to the timing of my retirement from my teaching career. This will allow me to take care of my family in the best way possible. As I leave the council before the end of my term, I am fully confident that my colleagues will carry on the good work and follow the straight paths we have set together. Despite my retirement, I will continue to champion Paramount, champion Paramount and its many great qualities. I want to thank my family for their love and support throughout my years as a public servant. Again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and God bless each and every... Again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and God bless each and every one of you, and God bless the city of Paramount. Thank you so much.
Before I address that, I have a couple of other comments in that as far as attending things, I guess I should say. I attended the award ceremony at the high school. Pretty amazing, especially when they brought up the students graduating with honors and high honors. I made a comment to one of my classmates that was there, that was sitting there, that, my goodness, that would be almost equal to our entire graduating class, these kids that came up there. I don't know, you, Councilmember Gillan was there, there was...
A lot.
A lot. In fact, they're going to have to get bigger risers because it keeps getting bigger every year, it seems like. It was just amazing. I don't know, there must have been 75, maybe 100 kids that with high honors, and I believe that was 3.8 and above, if I remember correctly. It's just pretty amazing. Ditto on the, on the festival staff and all the volunteers. I mean, everybody was doing a good job, and it was great. I did make a comment initially when I heard about the parade that I didn't want to ride in the car, I wanted to ride a horse, but they wouldn't let me. And then all of a sudden, they show up with a Mustang, so I said, well, I guess I do get to ride a horse after all, you know? That was pretty cool. And also, growing up here all my life, I, probably shouldn't say this, I've never milked a cow in my life until Saturday, and so that ended up having to be done. And he even kind of taught me a little bit, and I kind of squirted a little bit at our photographer, which he had to jump back out of the way. So that was, you know, it was a great deal, and there were a lot of people down, down the boulevard. It was amazing to see everybody there. So my hat's off to everybody who was involved in that. It was an outstanding job, and I certainly appreciate it. Now, I'd like to get a consensus from the city council here as to direct the, the city attorney and the city manager to draft a report on options on handling this situation and report back to us immediately, if we could. Can I get a consensus from the council on this?
The budget situation?
No, no, no. The resignation.
Oh, I see.
Resignation.
I thought, wow, yes, okay. I don't know what, I don't know what you mean.
We want to instruct the city manager and the city attorney to give us all the options that we're going to have as of this. Is this taking place very shortly?
I'm in agreement.
I agree.
Okay, then we need to have, we need to have a roll call on that?
No, you can just have...
We just have a general consensus of everyone. Okay. Also, then, I'd like to, well, before I do that, then, maybe I better ask staff before, if we have any reports from staff on, on anything. And then I'm going to come back on this, too.
No, sure.
No, okay. Then, what I would like to do then, with, again, a general consensus of everyone here, if we can have a special council meeting next Tuesday at, say, 4:30 to discuss the options that the city attorney and city manager bring forth to us. Is everyone available at that time?
In a closed session?
No, no.
Open session?
Yes.
I'm available.
The 11th?
The 11th, yeah, next week. Special meeting.
I can make it.
Everybody can make it? Okay, and we don't need a roll call? I have a general consensus on that also.
Yeah.
Okay, then this meeting is adjourned until then, at that point in time.
I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Paramount Housing...
I got successor stuff first.
Oh, please.
Let me get mine done, okay? Call the regular meeting of the successor agency, the Paramount Redevelopment Agency, to order, can we have a roll call, please?
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Public comments.
No, sir.
Consent calendar, approval of the minutes of May 7.
Move it.
Second.
Now, wait a minute. You guys are really getting me confused, which one is going to do which?
Got a motion and a second.
But motion and a second to, to approve the minutes. We have a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. We've already pretty much had the introduction of the budget, so we don't need to go over that again, do we?
No, sir.
Okay, then this meeting is adjourned until June 18.
Okay, now we'll call to the regular meeting of the Paramount Housing Authority. Order a roll call, please.
Commissioner Guian?
Here.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Vice Chair Hanson?
Here.
Chair Hofmeyer?
Here. No public comments, I take?
No, sir.
New business approval of the minutes of April 2, 2019?
Make a motion to approve those.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Guian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanson?
Yes.
Chair Hofmeyer?
Yes. And we've already did the budget, and no comments from staff or commissioners?
No, sir.
Will adjourn this meeting to June 18, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. I mean, yeah.